TV and via livestream and call the April 11, 2023 regular meeting to order with all board members present, except for one, Cody. Enough to get started, okay. The Army JRTC Color Guard from Kearney High School will now present the colors. Please stand for the presentation of the colors.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like a motion to adopt today's agenda. Is there a motion? Motion by Dr. Whitehurst Payne and second by trustee Nepomassino. Please vote trustee Nepomassino. Trusty Couturiano.
Aye.
And all others. Motion passes unanimously with student members concurring. I'd like next to call for a moment of silence and remembrance of two San Diego Unified students who have recently passed away. Kayden McMahon, a kindergartner at Franklin Elementary, and Garfield, San Diego High Thank you. We express our most sincere condolences to the families of these students.
Today's meeting of the Board of Education is a business meeting that is conducted in public and board members will not engage in a dialogue with members of the audience. Board Bylaw 1025 sets the time limit for public comment on agenda items at 10 minutes per side, pro and con, or 20 minutes total. Speakers will be able to provide testimony at the beginning of the appropriate agenda item or at the end of the meeting for non-agenda public comment. The list of speakers is attached to Agenda Item B2. Please listen for your name to be called. Speakers are listed and called in the order received. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. Speakers participating via Zoom will be asked to unmute when their name is called. If you are unable to unmute yourself, we will call the next speaker. Zoom does not allow staff to access your personal device to unmute a speaker. Please follow along with the agenda so that you know when your item is coming up for discussion. If you would like to sign up for in-person public comment, iPads are available in the back of the auditorium and in the lobby.
Thank you. Next, I would like to ask Zarel Schuler, Grade 5, Hadley Blan, Grade 5, and Israel Barahas, Grade 3, from John Muir UTK 8 Language Academy, one of our amazing schools in District A, to come to the podium and introduce tonight's student presentation.
Yo soy Zarel Schuler y me da mucho gusto estar aquí hoy con ustedes.
Yo soy Hadley Blan. Zarel y yo estamos en quinto grado y estamos aquí hoy para introducir nuestra escuela y comunidad de John Muir Language Academy UTK through a Spanish immersion magnet.
Me llamo Israel Barahas. We are excited to be here today to share about the wonderful things that are happening at John Muir Language Academy.
Nuestra comunidad enfoca el lenguaje y lectura. We focus on language and literacy.
Enfocamos en ser una comunidad restaurativa. We also focus on being a restorative community.
Y también tenemos un enfoque en cultivar cultura. And we also have a focus in cultivating culture. Let's take a sneak peek into our Muir community as you view this video.
We invite you to join us as we grow and learn at John Muir Language Academy.
We are a magnet school focused on Spanish language immersion, global citizenship, and restorative practices.
In every class, we learn about the Spanish language. It is built on what we call our sonidos iniciales. Through chants and movement, we retain the letter, sounds, and this builds our knowledge of syllabas, which quickly turns into palabras.
Spanish language and literacy developments are important to our academic program. Our teachers will teach important reading behaviors and writing strategies during our literacy block.
But we also have a strong focus on small group learning and guided reading. We have a dedicated teacher who works with our students in grades Kinder through 3rd to give us a double dose of guided reading. At Muir, we get the help we need to grow our Spanish reading, writing, listening, and speaking skills.
At Muir, we also have a focus on becoming global citizens through the Muir way, which focuses on responsabilidad, seguridad, y respetar. Our elementary students can also show off their leadership skills by joining the Peace Patrol.
Middle school students are trained as youth leaders. They can come into our elementary classrooms to lead community circles. They build leadership skills while we get to learn about each other so we can better understand our differences and similarities. Esto es fantastico.
As global citizens, we love to have fun engaging in cultural experiences and learning opportunities. This year, through our middle school soccer team, we played against other middle school schools across our district. Families, staff, and students came out to support our team.
Our families, staff, and students enjoy hosting events and activities like our Dia de los Muertos celebration, multicultural fair, and our upcoming family and community engagement awards and seal of bilingualcy ceremony. These experiences open our minds and our hearts.
As global citizens, we work with community partners like Baboa Park, House of Puerto Rico in Mexico, and the Intercultural Ambassador Program from San Diego State University. These opportunities allow us to explore other Spanish-speaking countries and their culture.
Through multicultural experiences, we gain a better understanding of the world. On occasion, we even get up and dance, move, and enjoy amazing food, like when we worked with Afro-Latino California to celebrate Black History Month through the rich and vibrant culture of the Afro-Latino community.
Our experiences help us gain a better understanding of the world and the contributions we bring as global bilingual and bicultural students.
We hope to use our critical thinking and collaboration skills to build bridges between communities. And we know that as accountable, empowered students, we will persevere as lifelong learners. We hope you enjoyed your peek into the John Muir Language Academy community. And we invite you to join us as we grow.
The Muir community is excited about our growth next year. We are excited about the completion, the completion of our modernization project, which will open a brand-new state of the art school.
With three new UTK and kindergarten rooms, three new maker spaces, two new collaboration spaces, new family and community engagement center, and student empowerment center, additionally, with our increased student enrollment, we will open five new classrooms and grow from 14 teachers to 19 classroom teachers.
We are excited to continue to grow and cultivate the John Muir community. As a matter of fact, we invite you to a fun-filled experience as the immersion magnet schools come together this Saturday at 1:00 PM for a baseball game as we watch the Padres and Brewers play.
Los agradece, los agradecemos por su tiempo y los invitamos a Muir.
Vamos montañeros.
Thank you again to Hadley, Zarel, and Israel. That was amazing. We could tell you spent a lot of time practicing that. It was fantastic. And I'd also like to thank Principal Stan Inchez for being here. And our Air Superintendent Monica Hazel and all the great staff and parents who joined us tonight as well. Thank you so much. Do we have any one else wanted to say? No? Yeah.
Can we do a group picture with everybody?
Group picture, yes. Ready? Okay. One, two, three, cheese. I didn't hear anybody say cheese just now. I'm just saying. Beautiful.
All right, hold on.
Okay. Okay. Moving on. General Counsel Green, do we have any reportable actions from today's closed session? We do not. Thank you. Superintendent Jackson, do we have any administrative assignments to report?
We do. Thank you. This evening, I am proud to appoint the following staff members and welcome them into their new roles. Principal Clark Middle School, Kevin Martin. Principal Golden Hill Elementary, Julia Martinez. Principal Sessions Elementary, Elizabeth Ward. Program Manager for Online Learning, Esther Wise. Program Manager, School in the Park, Sarah Schulte. Program Manager for Mathematics, Jessica Walsh. And Program Manager for Charter Schools, Joanne Lynn Henning. Congratulations to you all.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. At this time, I'd now like to introduce our ASB students that are here this evening. Annika Harper from Claremont High School and Zach Oxton from La Jolla High School. They will be introducing themselves and telling us a little bit about them as well as what is going on at their schools. Let's go ahead and start with Annika.
All right. Hello. I'm Annika Harper. I'm a senior at Claremont High School. I'm the ASB president. A big thing at Claremont, since we are a small school, we really like to focus on community, since we only have about 900 students. And so, a big thing this year, especially for ASB, I was a freshman when COVID first happened, so I lost kind of like two years about the big thing at Claremont is spirit and super close community, super close knit. So, this year, we really wanted to focus on getting back what we lost our last two years. This Friday, we have our last pep rally of the year and our last SADY's school-affiliated dance, besides prom, called Getting Groovy at SADY's. We're super excited for that. Our previous speaking about dances and pep rallies, our homecoming pep rally was the most spirited pep rally we've had since, I think, my freshman year. We're super big on including our special needs program, and we call it Circle of Friends and Unified Champions, so including kids with disabilities or special needs in sports. So, we had a big game of handball, we call it, where all the kids from our school got together, kids with disabilities and not disabilities, just playing together in a handball in front of the school, and we're all cheering them on. Just super like fun and friendly, like this is not something to be scared of, we're not pointing, not making fun of them, like they're just human, just like we are. So, that was a big thing for our school that we were really happy to do. And luckily, our PE Administrator, Laurie Smerchell, she was very big on that we're going to keep doing this every other pep rally. And we had one of our students in ASB, he has special needs, and Billy Harrison, and he wanted to ask a girl to homecoming. And he is a, he's a very good singer, so he wanted to sing in front of the entire school and ask the girl out. And so, we got the entire school to get their flashlights out and start singing along with him. So, it was a very cute moment for us, a highlight of our year, to be honest. And, yes, she said yes. We got to see them slow dancing at homecoming. It was awesome. Yeah, so Claremont and other things that we do, we have this new committee this year called Monthly Celebrations, since we want to celebrate every other holidays or awareness months, since we had a Black History Month celebration where we post on our social media to make people aware of the situations and celebrate what has happened. We also had our book, we have a book club at Super Bay at Claremont, so we posted our book club and how to get into this club and what's super important about reading and the fundamentals, since we are at school, books are important. And another thing we had was, we had campus beautification. We have a garden gang in our school, and we really wanted to fix up some of our gardens since all the rain has really trashed them out recently. So, we made our new butterfly garden, and this also really helped include our Circle of Friends, helping them get involved with getting our hands dirty planting plants. So, that was super fun for us. And moving on to what ASB does, ASB is really the backbone of our school. Since we are so small, we want to get everyone involved as much as possible, and we want to make school fun, especially for me as a senior. I want to make the most memories I can here at Claremont while I'm still here. So, some other things we have to appreciate, our teachers, our spirit attacks. So, it's a random teacher choosing every other two weeks, and we go into the classroom when they're not there. We put decorations everywhere, balloons, streamers, thank you cards, candies, just to like give them a pat on the back, like thank you for all you do, like we appreciate you and we want you to keep teaching here. So, just a little giving back to our community is a big part, especially since, as I say, we are a small school. We want everyone to be a family. And yeah, moving on to our athletics. Since we are in the works of trying to change our mascot, since we are the chieftains, it's a little culturally appropriate, and we want to change it into something else, we're in the works of that, figuring out another mascot. So, we do have this thing called the Chief Award, where it stands for each one of our values, it's courage, integrity, so on. And we pick two athletes every other month to who values or who stands out for this award. And I won it, I think, two months ago during our winter season for water polo. It's super, it's super cool to just see, they give you a certificate, like hey, like you're an important person, not only on the field, but as a leader. And another thing, we, our soccer team, for the first time, we won Division 4, the CIF title, and we made it to state, which is, no one has ever made it to state before except our cross-country team, so that was a super big accomplishment. And ASB threw them a little ice cream party, just to like, hey, like congratulations, like that's really awesome, especially for, we don't, we have a lot of sport programs, but since we are so small, it's hard to like get them out there, and we don't have as much funding as, say, other bigger schools. So, yeah, we had actually really a lot of success this year for our sports. Our cross-country team, two of our athletes made it into state, which was super good for them. And our rugby team was Division 2 runner-ups for the champions. They moved up from Division 3, they won last year, and so they moved up to Division 2 and got runner-up, so that was super cool for them. And our girls' water polo team, we're in the Open Division this year, which was the top eight teams in San Diego, and we were seeded at three, or seeded number three. And we won the West, or we got second in the Western League, which is the hardest league in San Diego, playing against, so didn't do too well in CIF, but it happens, so hopefully, hopefully next year. But yeah, Claremont, we're just, we're doing pretty good. I'm really happy, and I'm really happy to be a part of the school and be ahead of it too. So, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Annika. That was a, I love how comprehensive you talked about community and work, you know, special, you know, students, special ed students, as much as like the athletes and trying to get everyone, you know, working together and a sense of family, and so I really appreciate that. And I've had the opportunity to go to Claremont a few times, because it is one of my schools as well. And I didn't know that much about Claremont High School, and I've really learned, you know, it's a, it's a really wonderful atmosphere. The internship program that you guys have there, I'd love to replicate that. I've been working on him to get that.
Yes, I'm part of the internship program right now.
Yes, and they had your, what I wish my parents knew, night evening program, which was really impressive. So, thank you for all you're doing. And I know we have someone here that was an alumni of Claremont High School.
I'm not going to sing today.
All right, now we're going to move.
I'm attending Cal State Monterey Bay University next year to play water polo, so.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Zach Ostkin from La Jolla High.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Zach Ostkin. I'm a senior and I'm ASB president at La Jolla High. I think that the biggest thing going on at La Jolla High right now is that it's our 100th year, so I'm in the 100th year graduating class, which is very exciting. We're putting on a lot of events for that, so alumni events. We've had a homecoming game where we brought, I think, six decades of alumni, which was really awesome to have everyone out there. And now, we're doing a casino night fundraiser for our parents is coming up this month. Our future ASB president is actually planning a music festival for the centennial celebration for all of our students. And other than that, for our seniors, obviously, it's coming to the end of the year, so we're having a lot of senior events. I'd say most people are looking forward to prom. We have Disneyland Senior Night. The prices are getting a little steep, so ASB is doing some fundraising to offset those for certain students. We have a senior breakfast, and we have our award ceremony as well. In terms of college, seniors are hearing back from colleges at that time, juniors are starting their whole process. We're very lucky to have a college advisor on campus, Ms. Linda Dowley, and she is a free resource to students who helps with college and everything that you would need to prepare yourself. For athletics, we've had a very big turnout, which is super lucky for our athletic games this year. The superintendent visited our homecoming game, I'm sure you saw, we had a lot of school spirit. We've been having merch handouts. We have a TikTok account, which has gone viral, very excited about that. And then, apart from football, we also want to promote volleyball, smaller sports, because football seems to get all of the hype about that, so we want to place that in other places as well. Our future ASB president is also starting a club called the Student Section Club, which is giving out free merch, stuff like that, benefits getting people involved more in the games. So, we're definitely looking to boost the academic side of our school spirit. And we're holding a United Students Basketball Game this month, which is a bit like Annika had talked about, where helping students with special needs get involved and play a basketball game against our students during lunch, things like that. For ASB, we have just finished our election, so we have our new board members for the 2024 school year. We're getting a jumpstart on training, making sure everyone's ready. We've been working with Circle of Friends, which Annika had at her school as well, and ASB have students meet with them at lunch. I've been working with PTSA to promote ASB's prospective students to come and give tours. And we just had our WASC visit as well, which went very well. Yes, a stressful time, but we got good reviews. And then, I've also implemented something, which I think is very cool, in our ASB, it's a big, big project system, so each student has to be involved in some way with holding some school event, having a big project that they can participate in, so they break up into groups to do that. And that's how we got the Centennial Music Festival event. We're doing a Culture Week coming up at the end of this month, where we're celebrating the art, the music, dance, clothing of different cultures. And so, because of that, we're having a lot of new ideas and new fundraisers that we haven't thought of before, which is a great way to bring spirit, but also to show the ASB students kind of how to, how it works planning an event, things like that. We're putting on parent fundraisers, chess tournaments, everything involved with that. I think that's it for me. Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Zach. That was also very informative. Again, you know, nice balance between all the different areas you, you guys are covering. So, thank you to both of you guys for being here this evening. Appreciate it. Oh, did we find out where you're planning on going next year or this fall, I should say?
I'm going far. I haven't decided, but I'm going to go to the UK for college.
Very nice. That sounds amazing. All right, thank you. And moving on, Superintendent Jackson, can you please provide your information report for this evening?
Yes, and I, I think I would be remiss if I didn't point out that trustee Patterson is alumnus from, from La Jolla High School.
Excellent, excellent. Okay. Any other credentials? Well, I want to begin by saying welcome back. I hope everyone had a restful spring break and had some time to, to just sleep, maybe rest. Yes. You know, I had an opportunity recently to participate with an invitation from Pacific Beach Middle School and our Seaport Climate Science Project that is happening in partnership with UCSD, and also the Port of San Diego and Seaport San Diego Project. And what a great experience this is for our students as they get to, to participate in hands-on marine science learning. And so, had a chance to go down to the port and experience that. Students were out on the vessel and coming in, and, and they shared their experience with us. And so, thank you to Pacific Beach Middle School and the students there. Yesterday, we had an opportunity to participate in the, the launch of Level Up, our summer enrichment program that kicks off its third year, and very excited. Thank you to Dr. Hearn at Mann Middle School, who had us there with Pam Gray-Patton from San Diego Foundation, Toby Pace, and, and all of our district staff from the Extended Learning Office, who is launching again Programs UTK to 12. And thank you to Jen Roberson, who is leading our high school work. I will remind everyone that registration is currently open for UTK to 8th graders, and we will also have registration opening up for our high score, secondary schools, April 17th, for additional enrichment programs, accelerated learning opportunities, and also internships. Very appreciative for the entire team and the opportunity that this board has committed to providing opportunities for our students beyond the school year. I do want to share that, and some of you may know, April- with UCSD, and also the Port of San Diego and Seaport San Diego Project. And what a great experience this is for our students as they get to, to participate in hands-on marine science learning. And so had a chance to go down to the port and experience that. Students were out on the vessel and coming in. And, and they shared their experience with us. And so thank you to Pacific Beach Middle School and the students there. Yesterday, we had an opportunity to participate in the, the launch of Level Up, our summer enrichment program that kicks off its third year. And very excited. Thank you to Dr. Hearn at Mann Middle School, who had us there with Pam Gray-Patton from San Diego Foundation, Toby Pace, and, and all of our district staff from the Extended Learning Office, who is launching, again, Programs UTK to 12. And thank you to Jen Roberson, who is leading our high school work. I will remind everyone that registration is currently open for UTK to eighth graders. And we will also have registration opening up for our high score, secondary schools, April 17th, for additional enrichment programs, accelerated learning opportunities, and also internships. Very appreciative for the entire team and the opportunity that this board has committed to providing opportunities for our students beyond the school year. I do want to share that, and some of you may know, April is Month of the Young Child. And I want to really thank the, the Team Unified, who is celebrating with the leadership of Michelle Spence. And she should be recognized with the entire team. Thank you, Michelle, for what you're doing. She has been spearheading celebrations and activities to honor our young children. Yes. From birth to age five. So thanks again, Michelle. And just want to publicly acknowledge her and, and the entire team. And we'll end with an acknowledgement. And we should all acknowledge that while this is a, a university, it, it is a city and a county celebration. Congratulations to the San Diego State Aztecs. And often, we, we talk about, you know, we talk about athletics, but, you know, when the, the programs here in San Diego are thriving, I think we get to see the beauty of our collective city and how we come together regardless of how we look, our age, gender, identity, ethnicity. And we all are about something. And hopefully, we can use that to be about other things, like public education here in, in San Diego Unified. So congratulations to the Aztecs. They represented San Diego well, and proud to announce that this evening. Thank you, President Bazo.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Now, each board member will have the opportunity to speak and share information if they wish. Please be mindful of the established two-minute time limit for each trustee. I can't remember who we've gone with last, but let's start down here with Dr. Cody Pedersen.
First of all, thank you again to the ASB representatives. Those were great presentations. I'll just point out that before I was a trustee, I was the secretary on the school's site council and site governance team for Principal Kuiper. And he just won Rookie of the Year for principals this year. So I just want to, he's at Torrey Pines Elementary. So that's all. I'll cede my time.
Let's just go down the row, and we'll go next with trustee Cattori.
If I may, can I have, do you want to go first? I, a lot of things that I want to talk about. I'm sure you can present much.
Trustee Nepomassino. Sorry, I should have had the students go first tonight.
Thank you, President Bazo. So a few weeks ago, I had the wonderful opportunity of traveling to Sacramento alongside Blessin, a student from Lincoln High School, Stacy and Sierra Cook. We had the privilege to testify for the Student Board Member Compensation Bill. And these past few weeks, I've also had the opportunity to tour some schools, including Lincoln, University City, and Mount Everest Academy, really with the focus of promoting our Student Board Member Elections and encouraging students to apply for candidacy. I'm also thrilled to announce the launch of The Wing Magazine, which you might find on your desk, Volume Two, Issue One, which is focused on art and activism. For a little bit of context, The Wing Magazine is a printed publication entirely led and produced by students. So I'd like to take this time to applaud all of our contributors, chapter staff, you can find over here, as well as Beckham Arias, our junior editor-in-chief, and my co-editor-in-chief Sahithi Lingampali. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you. I'm looking forward to, to looking through this. Okay, do, did we want to go back to you? No? Okay, trustee Cattori.
Thank you, President Bazo. Yeah, I just want to first thank Leah for all the great work that you've been doing regarding Student Board Member Elections and The Wing. The Wing is amazing. When the day that they were handing out at San Diego High School, I'm not going to lie, I kind of forgot that they were handing it out that day. But when you see a giant crowd in the quad, you can't help question, like, what's going on? And it was so awesome to see so many students so enthusiastic about news and publications and things that you could hold in your hands. With regards to the work that I'm doing, I'd like to first thank our central board office staff for all the great work that they've been putting in with regards to voter registration drives. They've been incredibly steadfast in helping us let our students take the next step in their life and being more civically engaged and giving the tools they need to participate in our democracy. I like to say that we're looking forward to working more with the Screen Addiction Resolution. We're looking forward to making real progress about that, seeing what role does, do screens and things like that play in our daily lives as students. And we look, look forward into bringing something forward to the Board of Education. I also like to thank trustee Hazen, Vice President Hazen, for connecting with Fabby and Wendy Rank Burr for, and we're looking to facilitate a conversation about standards-based learning and grading in the next Student Advisory Board meeting. And I'm really excited for that as well. I also like to highlight an experience that I had at Miramesa, where I got to tour counselors, seeing what role do they play when, regards to IEPs with students that may not be graduating and students that are looking to go to higher levels of education. It was amazing to see all the different models and practices that were going on there. And I look forward to learning more about this comprehensive system of supporting students that we offer at our school district. I also, that same day, I had a wonderful opportunity, a wonderful listening opportunity to listen and learn more and listen to one of the meetings regarding the designing for a meaningful graduation. It was awesome to learn and see all the great dialogues that are happening between many members of staff with regards to designing for a meaningful graduation. I also, that same day, it was a busy day, I had an opportunity to attend an ASB president's meeting as they look to transition to the next year. And it's really awesome to see the great leadership that our ASB council president, Zainip, has been putting into the council. And I'm really excited for that as well. That's my board information report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Cattori. And trustee and vice president, Shazen, Shayna Hazen. Shazen. Your new nickname. Shazen.
Thank you. I want to start by remembering Kayden McMahon, who was a six-year-old kindergartner at Franklin Elementary, who passed away on March 22nd. Kayden loved life. His laughter, passion, and energy brought joy to all who met him. He's missed greatly by his family, friends, and the Franklin community. And not only am I a school board member, I am also a Franklin parent. And during this heartbreaking time, I've seen our community really come together to support the family, our educators, and students. And I've witnessed, and hope no one ever has to witness, our district's really tremendous crisis response team, which responded immediately to provide grief counseling and support on campus the way they do, I know, on every campus that needs it. And at the request of the family, the Friends of Franklin Foundation has created a Kayden McMahon Memorial Fund to honor his memory at Franklin through two of his favorite things, sports and reading. I also want to recognize that this is a special time for many in our district. Many of our families over the last week have observed Ramadan, Passover, or Easter. And really want to thank our school leaders and educators that celebrate and support the diverse practices of all of our students and families. And lastly, I want to recognize our enrollment and expanded learning teams, who I've seen really shine recently. So our enrollment team, who I know has been working really hard over the last few weeks to facilitate both the choice and now TK enrollment processes for thousands and thousands of students and families. And it's been great to see continuous process improvements to make that enrollment, enrollment and registration process easier and easier and more accessible for our families. And also, Dr. Jackson recognized Toby Pace, but want to give a big shout out to Toby and her team, which have prioritized increasing access to our after-school primetime programs and have worked with our after-school partners to decrease our waitlist by 1,500 students from November through April. And I know, and I think all working parents know, that after-school care can be really transformative for families. And I'm grateful for our collective commitment to leveraging state funds to increase access for all of our elementary school families.
Thank you, trustee Hazen. Let's go down to trustee Dr. Whitehurst Payne. Would you want Richard to go first? Okay, we'll go with, we'll go with trustee Barrera.
I'll jump in. Thank you, President Bazo. First of all, I just want to thank our deputy superintendent, Fabiola Baguilla, and the whole team that put together a really powerful meeting at Wilson Middle School last week, talking about safety and security and wellness on campus. And it included the voices of our students, a group of middle school students from Clark and Wilson especially, the voice of our parents, the voice of our educators, and the voice of our community partners. And I know it's the first step along a process to listen to each other and to develop collective solutions to make sure that our, our students are both safe on campus and are connected. So thank you. Very, very well-organized meeting. It's also been a big last couple of weeks for our VAPA department. So several of us had the opportunity on Saturday to be at the Shell. Incredible day where about half of our high schools, either their orchestra or their concert band or both, got to perform at the, at the Shell. And the other half had had an opportunity to do this last year. And they were amazing. And they did our, did our, did our district proud. They did public education proud. And I especially want to thank the, the team at Wilson Middle School, Principal Liz Duval, and our Arts and Music Director, Laura Richardson, for an incredible performance of The Lion King, which I think was the first performance at the new Wilson Theater. Oh, yeah. And the, the kids were, were, were just really fantastic. And it was a, a partnership with the Old Globe that, you know, helped with everything from the, the material for the, for the, for the play and the musical to the costumes. So it was just really well done. And I know how important it was to our families in City Heights at Wilson to, to see this happen.
Great. I love that. And trustee Dr. Whitehurst Payne.
Thank you. And I wanted Richard to go, so he could talk about the VAPA event. I think I may have some pictures out there. I was trying to get more. But you can go online and pull up VAPA Foundation. And all of us were there. I think the president may have been the only one not there, but we know what your circumstances are. But it was a wonderful event. And I want to say thank you to the VAPA staff, because they always do a fabulous job. Our students were thinking, oh, can I compete with this other group? But it was a wonderful opportunity for them to see, to share, to perform on that stage. And we're thankful for that. I too want to commend the Hoover Cluster. And I want to call out the deputy superintendent. Just as I spoke, Russ walked in. Yes. Good job. Well done. Well done. And I want to thank our deputy superintendent, Dr. Fabby, for what she did for our parents who have been complaining since December. I think I've been sharing. And I think you and Pam King deserve some accolades for getting the message and putting this first event on. And we've committed that we're going to stay with the students and parents to implement this and to understand their concerns and to meet those needs. So I want to say thank you to you. I also want to just acknowledge a couple of other things. And one is, we talked about safety, and that was the issue. That is the issue at Hoover, the Hoover Cluster, that they're concerned about safety. And Shayna talked about safety. I think that's an ongoing concern that we all have. So I had, I joined in with the Gompers community, because MTM is right next door. And we have many schools around the Gompers community. And we're in the process of trying to get a meeting with the mayor to ensure that some of the changes they've made there in the transportation don't result in anything that's untoward in that community on 47th Street and Hilltop. And so we are focusing on safety as an ongoing practice to keep our students safe, because it's not safe when you only have one lane and everybody stops in the middle of the street to drop students off on a busy road that leads to the freeway. So we've heard it over and over again from several communities. Johnson had that problem that I think we've worked to try to solve. And this is a concern, because our schools are together. It's not just a charter school or our schools. They're all together, and they're all our students. So we will keep that going forward. And I want to thank Shane Harris, Reverend Shane Harris. You might want to talk about that. Was it 55 years? And so we had an opportunity to go to that event and participate in that activity. But we are out and about doing things to help make our schools safe and to stay on track for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Whitehurst Payne. And yes, as much as I was sad that I missed this year's VAPA, the Reedy Shell, I was there last year, and it was an outstanding event. And I look forward to next year's program. And I wanted to just share a few experiences I've had in the last couple of weeks with regard to student voice in, in our schools. I was out at Erickson Elementary with Principal Darius Ashton. And we had a student, it just happened to be a couple of days before, who had come to her. So she had her come meet with us. And this came kind of out of the Leader in Me program that Toby Pace, shout out, when she was a principal at Hickman, had gotten started in Miramesa Schools. And she, this little fifth grader, just came in and sat down. And she told us how she wanted to start having ambassadors at the school that would go out to and work with students that were maybe sad that day. And it was just all her idea. And we sat and talked about, well, what would this look like? And how would you work this out? And, you know, and she just had this whole plan in place about how she wanted to have ambassadors at all, you know, across the school that could, that could identify or, you know, reach out to a student that was, was maybe not having a good day, was sad. And, and it was just so touching that, you know, she, she had thought this whole thing through. And I was really excited. So I'm excited about what's going to happen with, with their program over there. And I'll share more about that. And then I also got to go to Sherman Elementary and be part of, participate as part of their Read Across America a couple weeks ago. And I got to read a book to a fifth-grade class, and I'm forgetting the name of the book now, but it was about, if you're sad, when something sad happens to you, like, trying to look at the beautiful things around that. And so I read the book, and we had Mitzi Marino was there, their superintendent. And Nicole Enrique, Enrique is, is the principal at the school, amazing woman as well. And we just talked about, you know, what it's like, if you, well, sometimes you can be sad, but maybe there's things happening that are, you know, kind of beauty around that. And so we had a really nice conversation. I really loved connecting with the students. And I'm planning to go back for Career Day now. So just a few of the many amazing things that are happening in our stu, in our district and how, how inspiring our students are every day. And so that was a lovely experience and a lovely event. Okay, now, I'm going to move on to, we are on student instructional matters. We will now consider item E1, which is the Proposed East Village Middle College High School and San Diego Metropolitan Regional and Technical High School, the San Diego Met, the 22, 23, 24 instructional calendars. Okay, we have a motion from trustee Barrera, and a second from trustee, Vice President Hazen. Okay, no speakers. Do any of the trustees have questions about this? Okay. We'll have trustee Cattori on a vote, please.
Aye.
And trustee Nepomassino?
Aye.
All others? Okay, the motion passes unanimously with student board members concurring. Next, we're going to hear item E2, which is an update on the LCAP Goal One, which is Community Schools. Superintendent Jackson and staff, please present the item.
Thank you, President Bazo. Please join me in welcoming our community schools staff, Jason Babino, our senior director, and Aaron Peterson. I think he's joining us. He's our district coordinator. And also, we have Isabella Millard, who is a student at La Jolla High School, who will be providing us an update on community schools and LCAP Goal Number One.
Good evening, board trustees. Tell my students that I said hello. I see you filming. Board trustees, superintendent Jackson, ASB presidents, great job. Ms. Stoltz, good evening. Thank you for having us. We're excited to update you on our LCAP and take you through our community schools journey up to this point. As superintendent Jackson said, my name is Jason Babino, and I'm actually, and I'm the senior director of Community Schools. name is Jason Babino and I'm actually, and I'm the Senior Director of Community Schools. I'm actually going to have my amazing team introduce themselves as well.
Good evening. My name is Isabella Millard and I am a senior at La Jolla High School. I'm currently serving my second term as Co-Chair of the Community Schools Steering Committee and I'm excited to share some of what we've been working on.
Good evening, everybody. Aaron Peterson, District Community Schools Coordinator. Maybe a little less than a year ago, you guys introduced me as the newest member of the San Diego Unified Family. I'm here from Wisconsin, so I'm excited to get away from the cold and thanks for having me.
Thank you. And really, we have a few goals for tonight's presentation. One, it's to provide you with a better understanding of where we've been, where we are and where we're going with community schools. It's to help paint a better picture of the relationship between the grant funds and our district fiscal commitment. And three, it's to equip you with information as you go out and talk with your constituents about community schools if they have questions. So I really want to start with giving you a broad overview of the collective work that has happened with the community school team. As you review this, I want to pull out a couple of things. And I think it's important to note that you're going to have questions about this timeline. It's going to prompt other questions and our plan is to address those, but we really think it's important to anchor us in the work that has been done up to this point. And so from this timeline, as you're reviewing it, there's a couple of things that I really want to pull out. And one specifically is the cohort model and two is the Advisory Council that we have. So firstly, with the cohort model, this is a strategic growth plan that groups schools with annual benchmarks based on the year of implementation that they are in. And this is a continued cycle that we're going to be supporting on an annual basis as we see the continuous improvement with our schools. And secondly, with the Advisory Council, I want to note that our Advisory Council and the members included in it decided to go become a steering committee this past fall. And really, the effort of that was to ensure that the time and the efforts of the members were maximized due to the CORM requirement of the Brown Act. So to talk more about the work that the Steering Committee has done, I'm going to bring Isabella back up, who has been an amazing co-chair.
Thank you, Jason. So our Steering Committee is, thank you, thank you. Our Steering Committee is comprised of a variety of educational partners, including students like me, parents, labor partners, community members and post-secondary partners. As for our work, one of our most significant responsibilities on the committee, when it was first formed, was to develop the criteria and process for community school selection. The criteria developed are listed here on the slide and they are as follows. First, that 70% of students at the proposed school be eligible for free or reduced price lunch. We have attached two separate documents related to this point on the agenda item. Attachment B is a board district map, which indicates both participating schools and eligible schools. And Attachment C is a spreadsheet with the same information. The second criterion is the submission of a letter of intent that shows support from all educational partners at the school. And finally, that we receive a submission of a complete application from the school. The Steering Committee developed an in-house application that helped evaluate readiness to become a community school. We ask for commitment from all educational partners and the SGT to engage in the application process. And broadly speaking, the application largely requires that the school share, first, how they are currently in alignment with the community school pillars, and second, what their vision is as a community school with the resources that come along with it. The complete application, which goes into further detail, is also attached under the agenda item as Attachment D. So now I'll pass it back to Jason, who is going to discuss our first round of applicants and Cohort 1 designation. Thank you.
So last year, we had 10 schools apply to become designated community schools. You'll see the schools who were selected and designated by our Steering Committee in Cohort 1 up on the slide, on the top left of that slide. In addition to those schools, we have what we are referring to as pipeline schools. And pipeline schools are schools who applied to become a designated community school, were not selected last year, but were included on the state grant and were awarded the grant funds. And so what we're doing with these pipeline schools specifically is this year in particular, as they are pipeline schools, they do have access to some grant funds and they receive coaching on building up the community school pillars, really to set them up for success when they do become designated next year. And as Isabella is going to share, these pipeline schools are designated next year in Cohort 2. A couple of things I want to note is you may be asking, well, if we had all these schools receive grant funds, well, why are they not all designated at the same time? And the Steering Committee, along with district leadership, made a strategic decision collectively to ensure that we do this the right way, to go slow, to go fast, to ensure that we are building processes, systems and structures with the expectation that we are going to be scaling out. We are going to have more than five schools. So it was really important that we are doing things the right way, that we are learning as we go through this process, and that we are authentic to the community school model as well and making that a focus. I also want to note that although pipeline schools only have access to some funds this year, grant funds roll over on an annual basis. And so even though they have minimal access to their funds this year, they will eventually have full access to five years of grant funding. So I think that is important to note in terms of the plan that we have. And as Isabella was a part of designating Cohort 2, she's going to come back up and discuss.
Thank you. So a focused and targeted approach was developed to ensure information regarding how to become a community school was accessible to all of our eligible schools, including many site visits by Jason and Aaron to school SGTs and staff meetings. As for Cohort 2, in comparison to last year, the quantity of applications doubled, so we had 20 new schools complete in application. And to that end, I also wanted to take a moment to touch on the caliber of submissions that we received this year. Coming from someone who served on our Designation Subcommittee for both rounds of applications, the efforts of my fellow team members and also those completing the applications definitely did not go unnoticed. We are asking a lot of the schools through the application process, but it gave each group, it gave each group the opportunity to show us their passions and also highlight what they thought was best in their community. And that was something that really came through this year on each application. So I mentioned a Designation Subcommittee and that was a group composed of a teacher, community partner, district leaders, the SDEA President and me. We determined that the following schools would join the pipeline schools to round out Cohort 2. Burbank, Cherokee Point, Chola Smid, Fay and Lafayette. So while only five of the 20 schools are designated for next year, it's important to note two things. First, that all 20 of schools, all 20 schools that submitted an application were a part of Round 2 of the state grant application that was submitted on March 21st. So we're looking to secure five years of funding for each listed school. Additionally, the 15 schools that were not selected for next year will become pipeline schools. So as Jason mentioned, they will receive support next year with access to some grant funds and coaching to set them up for success when they do become designated community schools. Thank you.
So these next few slides, I'm going to talk a little budget and funding. So in the top left, what you see there, and this is really a snapshot of the grant funding specifically, the top left, what you see there are the schools who were awarded last year's grant. So the $12.8 million that went to those schools specifically. On the bottom left of this slide, you're going to see the schools that were submitted on this year's grant application for $31.7 million. How that number was reached is on the right there. That is the state allocation for how they are administering funds. You'll see that there's a direct correlation with school enrollment. First column is the amount the schools receive on an annual basis. Second column is for years one through four, second column is year five, what they will receive. And third column is the total grant award that they will receive over five years. So we thought it was important to share how schools are prioritizing some of their funds. And it's important to note that all expenses need to be in direct alignment with the community school pillars. And those pillars are on this slide. The graph that you see on the right, I want to share that these are the expected expenses of year one of both the district costs and grant costs. What's important to note, and I say district costs because what is important to note is that with this grant, there is a one-third matching requirement. And that takes me to my next slide. With the majority of funds being directed to school sites, we do want to note that we have made a commitment and a priority of building a strong infrastructure on top of supporting the cost of the site coordinators. Additionally, as schools enter into year two, three, four of being a designated community school, there is a need for curriculum and instructional coaching specific to culturally inclusive pedagogy. We are piloting this at Hoover High School right now. We have a teacher who has a release period to engage directly with this work. The feedback has been very positive and we were looking to spread this to other community schools moving forward. I want to explain this slide. And Drew, I saw you back there. I don't want you to have a heart attack. So I want to explain it and I want to provide hope. So what this slide illustrates is through '26, '27, if we scaled out to 30 community schools, and the 30 number comes from the schools who are currently designated and who are pipeline schools, those are the schools who have expressed interest, what our district cost would be. The most important thing, though, is that it's what our district cost would be if we only had and secured last year's grant of the $12 million, which is very important to know. We did not want to assume money that we don't have. So the other reason that we thought that this was important to discuss is because it is incredibly important that we do receive these grant funds. So on a local, on a state level, the advocacy involved is critical, whether it's this year for this year's grant or whether it's next year, as the state has introduced that they are going to be offering another year of grant funding. So collectively as a team, how we can advocate to ensure that we get these funds is extremely important to ensure that our schools get the services and the supports that they need. Enough about budget. I'm going to bring up Aaron to discuss the great work that our Cohort 1 is doing right now.
All right. Thank you, thank you. So the work of community schools is built all around collaboration and collaborative decision-making. And so all of our coordinators in our schools really work in Year 1 with that focus and that central message. So the implementation of the pillars and the collaborative process begins in community schools with a needs assessment. That needs assessment is built with and through the site coordinator to build relationships with stakeholders and problem-solving teams that engage in a deep understanding of what the school should look like, what the school should feel like, what are the barriers that are impacting our student's success and our family health. As they continue to do that, these teams will ask questions, they'll seek feedback and they'll develop plans to address the barriers and create the conditions necessary for our students to thrive. That's all Year 1's focus and I'll get into a little bit more of that in a second. As we gather that voice and share out the results and create a continuous feedback loops of all of our stakeholders to ensure that all voices are present and all voices are heard and all voices are part of the ongoing decisions that our schools are making to create the solutions that are identified by all of our stakeholders. To gather that voice and share out the results, we do this, the needs assessment is encompassed by a 75% minimum of all stakeholder voice, which includes very specific plans to go out and engage our most disenfranchised families. So we really want to ensure that their voices are present and at the table as we're making these future plans and creating a new vision for each of our schools. So as you can see up on your screen, this is the current position of all of our schools. So each school is working hard to gather that feedback. And as you can see, there's incredibly high percentages of feedback that they're getting now. They're really focused currently on gathering that family feedback and understanding what the needs are from that perspective. On the right are some of the active highlights. And so these highlights we placed here because these are direct and specific causes, actions and activities that come from the stakeholders. So this was not the school saying, oh, we want to do this and going out and spending community school funds to do it. This is in direct response to things families brought to the table and brought up and said that these things would help us better engage, better support our students, better feel connected and better feel healthy and safe in our communities. And so as we're creating these plans and doing this great work, the steps to creating collaborative problem-solving teams are as followed. So we use this as our benchmark and guidelines for doing and implementing the community schools model. The work that we are following is developed by the research and practices of the National Education Association, which coaches and provides coaching and professional development for not only our site coordinators, but our district staff and our school teams to engage in this work. So schools will go through Year 1, developing an understanding of the community schools model, developing an understanding of best practices, conducting a needs assessment in which they're seeking valuable feedback of all of our stakeholders, and then looking at creating those problem-solving teams to create the vision for our students, families and staff. I think the great and most impactful part of a community school is that we are doing things with our families and not to our families. So that's the critical piece of the collaborative nature of community schools. So Year 1 is dedicated to building relationships, understanding the need, building the teams to do the work and looking forward to what the vision will be. Years 2 and 3 are really about engaging in the work and engaging in our systems, evaluating our systems, seeing which systems are inequitable, which systems create barriers to our families and our academic success of our students, and creating those teams to work on changing those systems, putting in new programs, putting in new resources, bringing in new partnerships to address all the barriers and the visions that are created through that needs assessment that's begun in Year 1. Another great aspect of the community schools and why it's so powerful is the needs assessment is not a one-year project. It's not a one-year process in which you have it and you're done. It's ongoing. So there's this continuous cycle of listening, learning, responding and moving forward based on the vision and the needs of our families and our stakeholders. So Years 2 and 3 are about refining our systems, doing PDSA, Plan, Do, Study, Act, Improvement Science type of activities to bring in services and supports, track the data on our student progress, track the data on how well our staff are doing, how comfortable they feel, if our families are engaged, and continuously refining those cycles and doing that work until we see and build the systems and the appropriateness for our students to thrive. So that's Year 2 and 3. And then beyond that, again, it's just kind of continuing to refresh, continuing to listen, continuing to engage and continuing to be collaborative in the processes of community schools and being a voice with our community. And so this, we'd just like to share a quick video. This is from Hoover High School. As Jason mentioned, we've got Chase Fight, one of the teachers who has a one-period release that's working with Richard Giho, our site coordinator there. And they're just going to share some of the highlights of the work that they've done this year at Hoover High School, which is kind of encapsulates a lot of the work that's
Welcome, everyone. My name is Richard. I'm your Community Schools Coordinator here at Hoover High School. I'm so excited just to give you a brief snippet of what we're doing here. After listening to parents, students, staff and teachers, we've gotten a lot of feedback about what we need. So we started a few initiatives here, including our Hoover Market, aka our food pantry. We're supporting the Hoover Garden Project here. We're supporting some of our students are involved in risky behaviors and gain influence through an organization called Youth Empowerment. And we're bringing so much more support with eyesight, mental health, extracurricular activities. We are moving and grooving here and I hope you can come out and take a personal view. Thank you so much.
We've begun the work of the Needs and Assets Assessment here at Hoover as a part of the Community Schools Initiative. As the teacher coach, I've been able to help build up some of the structures and processes for listening to the voices of different stakeholders. We've just completed the Staff Needs and Assets Assessment and have been able to run focus groups with the different departments as well as push out a general survey. As a result of that data, we've been able to identify that the number one issue with regards to the staff is our attendance rates. And therefore, we're going to create a working group to try and address that needs based upon the data. Our next stakeholder group are the students. We're We're looking forward to running those focus groups, as well as obtaining that survey data to better improve our Hoover community through data-driven approaches.
Hi, my name is Daniela Silva. I am a senior here at Hoover High School, and I am also part of the community school subcommittee. I have been able to witness, you can say, a lot of major things that have happened here at Hoover, such as our community, well, our community garden, our pantry, and many more things that are coming. I have noticed how it has made a big impact with many students here at Hoover, me and my friends included. I have also noticed how being part of the committee has given us a voice that we know will be heard and valued throughout many years. Thank you.
So in closing, I really want to reiterate the fact that this is an effort of so many different people across our school communities. We are proud of the work of Cohort One. We're excited about Cohort Two. And through this process, I want to note that we have had a lot of learnings. And one of the primary learnings has been the importance of ensuring that all educational partners understand what it means to be a community school and how it impacts them if they are part of a community school. And so we've already taken some action steps with our Cohort Two to ensure that we address that. We've had an onboarding meeting with Cohort Two educational partners and site leaders. Currently, actually, right now as we speak, there is a community school, a spring institute that is bringing together educational partners and site leaders to build on the community school pillars. Additionally, we are going to be hiring our site coordinators this spring. So they're going to be hired, they're going to be onboarded, they're going to be trained, they're going to start building relationships at their school sites, are going to work through the summer, and they're going to be ready to roll as we start next school year. So with that being said, we appreciate you. We really do have an expectation to be a model in California, among other things, in our district. So thank you for your support, thank you for your advocacy, and have a wonderful rest of your evening. I'm ready. Bring it on, man.
Thank you so much, Jason. And now, I believe, we're going to go to questions and comments from the board members. Trustee Barrera.
Thank you, Jason, Aaron, and Isabella. Fantastic presentation, very, very clear. Couple of questions. So of the schools in Cohort One, how many have already hired a community school coordinator?
Coordinators were hired. They started in October, which was one of the challenges that we had this year. It's that they didn't start right away. And that's, again, it goes back to some of the learnings that we've had. So we currently, we started with five coordinators. We currently have four coordinators. One has been posted at MTM specifically, and we hope to be hiring that person as soon as possible.
And can you give us any sense of the backgrounds of the people who've come to work with us? Were they people who were educators before, community folks, combination?
We had, so just to give you some context, we had over 80 applicants for the five original positions. There was a broad range of skills and experiences. The five that we have had is a mixed bag. We have some that have worked in public service. We have two that were district employees. One of them was a wellness coordinator at a site, and one of them was an admin assistant at a site. So there's a broad range of people and skills that we are bringing on. We have 10 postings for our Cohort Two. We are expecting big numbers, and we're expecting a lot of different types of people that can help support our schools.
That's fantastic. And what kind of training and team building are we doing with the?
I'm going to bring up Aaron for that. He's the man that's working directly with our site coordinators. He's doing a great job.
So the training that we have for site coordinators is a six-week onboarding process in which we walk through a curriculum developed along with the, in conjunction with the NEA, based on the best practices of community schools. Then from there, moving forward, each month, all site coordinators receive coaching from the NEA on implementation and development of that. We have weekly team meetings that I host with the site coordinators to ensure that the implementation is going well and they're supported, and the progress is moving. So six weeks to start, and then ongoing monthly and weekly from there.
Right. Thank you. And then, and this is back to Jason's favorite topic, budget. So one of the things that, you know, I think we identified early on with the state grant is, so year one state grant was three-plus billion dollars for community schools. Our year one grant was 12.8 million, which is, again, we're doing this the right way. We're rolling this out and learning and not wanting to, you know, expand too quickly. However, my guess is that, so if we think about $3 billion from the state, if that money was allocated according to, for instance, LCFF formula, that would be roughly 50 or-so million dollars, you know, that our district would receive an allocation for, which means my guess is there's money sitting in the state account that has not been tapped into yet. And it's something that I think we want to monitor with, you know, with Sierra Cook because it's, I think it's very likely that, especially if a lot of districts are rolling this out the right way, or there are many districts, I would assume, that weren't as prepared as we were, you know, to roll this out. And given that sort of the concept, you know, that the state is giving districts five-year grants, maybe with the assumption that at some point, you know, the district starts to, you know, pick up that, you know, those costs. My guess is, over five years, as the state continues to, you know, put money into the community schools pot, there might be money there. And so it's something that we want to keep track of because when we get to these out years, and hopefully, again, we're successful at, you know, getting, you know, getting the grants for our schools, but as we scale up and as we get to the out years, if there's money that the state has not spent, that it budgeted for, we want to know that. And that's also maybe something that we want to have some conversations, you know, with either our, you know, local delegation or people at CDE or whoever we need to talk to.
Great, thank you.
Dr. Whitehurst Payne?
Thank you. I'm glad you went there with the funding source and so on, but also, I'm concerned about the community piece. If you go back to your Cohort One progress sheet, I was just looking at it, 80% of families, staff, and community participation. What does that mean? I mean, 80% of all the families in the school, 80% of all the staff, 80% of the community? Is that really what it means? Because how do you define what the community is? So, and then I look at one school that has, well, several of them are focusing on teacher-staff focus groups or teacher-staff participation in survey, or I think a couple of schools' staff participation in survey. I want us to keep in mind, this is just not another school project that we're doing, but it is community, by definition, community school project, right? This means that we need students in a big way. Thank you for participating, and we have her input, Isabella. But we just need to be sure, as you go down the road, that we don't go off into it becoming just staff. We've got to keep it focused on community, families, students. Okay? That's my big pet peeve because I've seen too many projects, they just turn out to be another project for staff and schools and nothing, the community goes by the wayside, parents are not involved. It's just a token comment that we make, so, anyway.
Can we respond to that, Dr. Whitehurst?
Yes, please, thank you.
We have a plan.
Yes, so as schools are, as we shared the timeline, schools are taking the full year to conduct their needs assessment. And part of that needs assessment is very specific plans to address each stakeholder group. So as schools are addressing staff, they have a specific set of questions and plans to identify staff. They keep a list of who's responded, who hasn't. Same with students and same with families. So they identify all of their families, they send out surveys, they see who responds, they conduct focus groups to see who responds, and then they create, as I said, they create targeted and very specific plans to address and reach those disenfranchised families to ensure that their voices are heard. So we don't move past any process of the needs assessment until we reach that minimum 75% benchmark, so that they cannot make plans until they can validate that each one of those stakeholder groups has been identified, as well as their community partners and folks in their neighborhood centers, et cetera. They partner with those folks, those groups, to identify what their needs are, what their barriers are to accessing the school, et cetera, et cetera. So all of those plans are followed, and it takes, as long as it takes, we don't move past these timelines until each group is made, is completed. We also use our SGTs as our decision-making body and our collaborative leadership body, which mandates that parents are present. And from there, once in years two, and three, and four, as they're creating their problem-solving groups, those problem-solving groups are largely going to be identified by stakeholders who have an interest and a care in what's happening. So they will reach out to those family members and those parents to say, here are our priority areas, what do you care about the most? What's most important to you? How do you fit into this work? Join us in making these decisions and being part of moving this work forward. So as the SGT is structured, requires collaborative decision-making and parent voice, as the community school model follows that very same structure of collaborative decision-making and ensuring parent voice is included in all decisions.
Thank you for lifting that up. If you look at this, just the presentation, that would be a fair concern. So thank you for lifting it up so we could help explain.
Vice President Hayeson?
Thank you. And I have to say, I think I'm the biggest cheerleader for community schools. I'm really excited about the potential here. I do have a few questions similar to trustee Whitehurst Payne. I'm concerned about what looks like limited engagement of students and families and community. So we talked through this progress report, and I guess the question for me, and the thing that I'm not clear about, is if this work is designed to meet the needs of students and families, why aren't we starting there with the needs assessment?
Go ahead. Okay. We don't intentionally start with the needs assessment because the research shows that you have to build relationships and you have to build trust in the model and trust in the system in order to get historically or traditionally for families and participation within this process. So we have our coordinators begin by going in and doing that capacity building, doing those introductions, having those conversations, sharing with their schools and their community what the model is, what the expectations are, how we are going to do school differently, how we're going to think about our education system in our community differently in order for them to understand the process and how it's going to happen. So then, and then we take some of those highlights that I shared with you, kind of that low-hanging fruit, to say, parents, you said you wanted, and this is actually an exact situation. I was at Hancock Elementary, sitting in our coordinator's office, and a parent walked in and said, hey, can I talk to your coordinator? I have an idea. I would like to be a part of bringing a flu vaccination clinic here because so many of our military families don't get vaccinated because the VA's backed up, blah, 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 blah. We immediately took action on that, got her number, got in contact with her, and planned, and they've had two flu vaccine, vaccination clinics at Hancock, and over 130 students were vaccinated and community members were vaccinated through that. So a direct response to a parent need. So that's building trust in the model and sharing with our communities that this is how we can address these issues. This is going to be the process of collaborative decision-making and learning. And so we have our coordinators take the full year to build those relationships, to share and do capacity building with the school community about how the model will be implemented and work, and then they'll take the rest of that year to do the needs assessment. And to get to your point about, like, you don't see much family engagement right now, and the process this year that the schools have embarked on is doing those captive groups. So we know we have our staff in school every day. We can get those groups, and we can get that done in a relatively quick amount of time, get their feedback through those focus groups. Same with students. We use our ASVs to hold student forums and get student feedback. We got that, and we're capturing that, and that's elevated right there in the slide. Right now, post-spring break, all five schools are focused on gathering that parent voice, and that's where, that's the challenge. So it's not going to be as easy as getting our students and our staff that are at school every day.
So the students, because I'm hearing just that mostly it's staff, but I'm hearing you say students have completed?
Yeah, so, yeah, at the time we built this, they were just wrapping up parents, moving into that student voice section. And now, post-spring break, now the focus is turning to all of our families in which they have specific and identified plans. And that is an arduous task and takes a long time. So there's no data reflected. Yes, there's not a whole lot of data reflected because there's been intentionally, it's been intentionally identified that we will do families with a much deeper focus because that's what it's going to require.
Thank you. And?
May I add to that as well?
Sure.
I think it's important to share and remind the team that we had coordinators started in October, November. And so these are people, some of them who are completely moved out of town. They have no relationships on the site. And so to just drop in as a coordinator and say, we need to give a needs assessment, is not leveraging the relationships and the trust within communities. Additionally, needs assessment, there's not just this needs assessment that we just give out. These needs assessments are developed by the site team. So there's a process involved to develop a needs assessment that associates with the school community. I also want to share that our parents and caregivers, around this time specifically, they are asked to do a lot of different things in terms of filling out surveys and providing feedback. Budget surveys, ELAC surveys.
Are we incentivizing their participation in this process?
California Healthy Kids Survey. So as we, so it could, it could. So one of our learnings is, with parents and really all educational partners being asked to do so many types of these surveys all at the same time, how can we strategically use these surveys that are really mandated in a lot of ways to pull from the data and add them as a part of our needs assessment so we are not adding something else for our parents and caregivers? And so with that being said, as Aaron alluded to, as relationships are being built, as these mandated surveys are done, now it's going back to the parents and caregivers and saying, this is collective work that we have developed, we need your voice.
Yeah, and I would encourage us to incentivize participation. I know community-based organizations provide gift cards, other things, for all of the reasons you've described, and so to think about, are there partners we can work with who can help us to do that? I'm also wondering, speaking of leverage, how and if we're leveraging MSW interns from universities to support the work?
As a collective, we have not engaged in that directly. However, Hoover High School specifically is a community school, and they are leveraging those.
That's great.
I know that the work of Nicole DeWitt, she's done amazing work with these organizations, and she and her team are engaging in ensuring that we are getting as many of these interns and support as possible. So that is absolutely work that we need to continue to build as we, as a district team, build relationships with the community to ensure that this is sustainable far past five years.
Thank you. And I know I already shared with you offline, but I think it's really important that we think about, right, in terms of sort of this financial plan that you've mapped out, or at least the budget, and the required matching funds, right, this 14-ish million dollars in match that we need to come up with, that we think about how we can engage some of our philanthropic partners who are already supporting this work in specific communities, and to plant the seed now that we're going to need that funding over the next five years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Dr. Pedersen.
Thank you, President Bazo. First of all, great work, great presentation. I particularly want to flag Isabella, your student participant, she was amazing, your co-chair. My guess is she's related to Damon and Michaela. Is that true?
I'm not.
No, you're not? Okay.
Probably.
Yes. I'm a La Jolla alumni, but those are old La Jolla people. Great work, it was a beautiful presentation. I have a couple of questions here specifically, which is, first of all, I want to say that this is, I think Richard and I were part of a group that brought in NEA maybe five, six years ago or something, and I want to... And I want to flag something that's happening, that's, that, something this district has, and I want to emphasize it, which is, to get out in front of things, it ultimately pays a dividend because it means that we're prepared when the rest of the state and the rest of the world comes along. It's true of this situation with community schools, I know Richard and the board was way out ahead in terms of thinking about this. It's true of UTK. It's going to be true soon of teacher housing, solar with Lee's help, solar, bus electrification. So I just want to emphasize, there is a dividend that ultimately gets paid for taking a leadership role. It looks costly, there's a loss leader on it, but it pays off ultimately, and I think we're going to see that the community schools may be much better positioned later to catch some of that $50 million that Richard referred to. I also want to flag that this is, to me, part of a sort of conceptual ideological commitment that we're making to leverage out from the schools and recognize we are a frontline social service provider. This came hard back to us in COVID, where there was really no government agency that has such an intimate relationship with students and their families, and that was perfectly positioned to deliver the kinds of, whether it be vaccines, whether it be ultimately vaccines, or tests, or universal free meals. And so I think I see a lot more of this in the future, in part because the schools are really one of the few agencies stepping up to move beyond the classroom and out into the socioeconomic context of education. I know I repeat that often in a lot of different contexts, but I'm very heartened to see this, and I'm very heartened by your work. I have a question. Having served on the site governance team, school site council, in a fairly affluent community, it was still very difficult to secure parent participation. I mean, there were times when I, as the secretary, was the only parent participant, or maybe the foundation head was the other participant. How, have you seen any results so far? What are you doing to secure greater parent participation? And in particular, participation from those parents that are typically left out of the process because they're busy, they have multiple jobs, they may have language barriers, and so in the end, you may get a parent population that's participating that's not necessarily representative of your families or the most in need. So number one, are you seeing any results in terms of parent participation? And number two, what are you doing to get beyond those sort of usual suspects in terms of parent participants? Thank you.
So I think first off, what I want to note is, part of the selection process really gauged what the parent participation currently is and the capacity that that school had to continue to build on that. I'll be honest with you, when I saw, as last year's Hoover principal, when we were designated a community school, and I saw that we needed 70% parent or caregiver participation, like, whoa, we're going to have to get real creative, real creative, just in reaching the parents. All parents want to have a voice, they all want to share what their wants and needs are for their children. So it's not a matter of them not being interested in participating, not be interested in having a voice, it's ensuring that we are bridging that gap and finding ways to meet them where they are at. So that's a great way of saying, we still have a lot of work to do in a variety of different school communities. And I know particularly with SGT, really, this has been a focal point of building up the capacity of SGT members to be really the center of the community school decision-making and ensuring that parents and caregivers are involved. It's not a matter of wanting, it's a matter of it being mandatory. And so I'm going to have Aaron speak because I know that we have, at a couple of our sites, all of our sites, but it's getting crafty. Like, what do we got, what are we going to do different? And it's trying something, it not going as well as we may have hoped, and trying something different, and not stopping until we see a wave of parent and caregiver participation that may, maybe not, has not been seen in that particular school community. So there's a couple cool things that I know coordinators have done, I'm going to have him speak to it.
So yeah, we're really young in this process. And as Jason said at the beginning, we, you know, the models go slow, go fast. Community schools is built on, at the speed of relationships, and so that's the center and the focus of all of the work. So what that looks like, and is beginning to look like in these early stages, is being varied in our delivery and our response. So some schools are doing like coffee with the principal, they're doing taco talks, churro chats at different times of the day to try to catch parents coming in the morning, coming in the afternoon, coming in the evening. I know one of our schools has bought their own translation devices to ensure that the language barrier is not an issue. They've secured translators through the district to host a number of meetings, things of that nature, to ensure that there's access for parents. And I think kind of the bigger theoretical picture of community schools too is really about those relationships and building trust in the model. And that will bear itself out as we move through the needs assessment. And as I, the example I gave about Hancock, it's about responding to the wishes and the vision of parents and taking that back to them and saying, hey, we heard you, we heard that vaccines are an issue, this is how we've responded, what else can we do? What are we missing? Come to the table and join us. And then the next thing that comes up, and responding and being reflective of the voices that we're hearing in our response to them, so again, doing it with our families and not to them, that over time, which the whole community school model is based off of kind of this continuous timeline of reflecting and building those relationships and building that trust, will continue to add parents to these teams and to this work. It's all theoretical now because we're so young in the process, but I've been doing community schools work since 2017 back in Wisconsin, and so this is kind of the model that we, that I've seen work. I work really closely with the NEA, and so I'm a part of a coaching team, a national coaching team, in which I'm working with districts across the country to get feedback from them and learn from them. So all of these things and collaborations and connections, we're bringing back to San Diego. And like Jason said, we're trying different things, ensuring and tracking how we're doing things and being varied and responsive to our families. And that will, as you talked about, like paying dividends, putting in the work early, that's exactly what we're doing with this, and that will pay off as we move through.
And Dr. Whitehurst Payne, lifting up what you said again, if we don't do something different, we are going to get the same results with our parents and caregivers. And it is imperative that we try to do something different. We have to do something different. And so with this community school strategy, this is an opportunity. This is an opportunity to try things, to take risks, to build capacity with a variety of different educational partners to ensure that we are getting that parent and caregiver feedback. So I know we're in our infancy, I can say a fault of mine is wanting to go like, right now, let's go, let's make it happen, right? And having to take a step back and see the big picture, that this is a process, is something that's really important, but it's the highest of priorities. So thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I just, sorry, trustee Cutoriano?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to say, like, first, thank you so much for such a beautiful presentation. It was amazing to see. I just had a couple of clarifying questions. I'm not sure that I totally understand what the 70%, I know we've been hammering this all night, but like, what exactly the 70% quota? The exact language that's used here is 70 to 100% engagement among, and then four different groups. And I'll give you the example, the way that I currently understand it is if, for example, there's 100 families, 200 school staff, 100 students, and 100 community members, if everyone but the students speak, then that would meet the quota. I'm not sure that I totally understand the way that that specific metric is being measured. Can you speak a little bit more about that?
No, it's each stakeholder group. So it's identified as 70% of each stakeholder. 75% of teachers, we have to get their feedback, we have to get their voice. 75% of students, that's being done through our ASVs mostly in our schools, 75% of parents and caretakers, 70% of community partners. So each stakeholder group has their own percentage, they have their own questions, they have their own focus groups and feedback sessions that each school is working through. So collect, so each group has to meet that standard before we move to the visioning stages of this work.
Sounds good, thank you. And then you mentioned about how all of this takes kind of a lot of time, especially when you're engaging with so many different community groups. I assume that this work may be highly, like, variable, depending on the schools, about how long it takes to reach different communities. Again, with timeline questions, you gave a very strict timeline of things to come, and that's awesome to see, but given the variability, like, how does that, does that change the timeline at all? Have you seen times, or do you expect times where, given different rates of family and community engagement, it changes the timeline?
Yeah, it's a great question. Ultimately, so the answer is yes, it does vary with communities. For example, at one school, we currently don't have a coordinator, and so that's going to be a setback, right? But I think it's important to note that if we do not gather the data from all of our educational partners, there is, I mean, there's no reason to move forward. What do we, what data do we have, right? And so ultimately, the priority is gathering the voice. And if it takes a little longer in some communities, then it takes a little longer. But that will continue to be the priority of each community, regardless of what the relationship they have with their parents and caregivers and other educational partners. So yes, it will vary, and how long it varies, of course, there's some urgency because we want to get going and start moving student outcomes, but, you know, at the same time, we're going to more effectively move those student outcomes when we get authentic, organic information from all of our educational partners.
That sounds like awesome work that you are doing. And the last thing I wanted to give up, and this may be kind of an elementary question, but is there a particular reason why you didn't, or why in the graph you didn't include new state grant funds? That just kind of spoke out to me, if we're looking to take on this giant burden, but we're not getting, we're not expecting almost any help from the state?
Yes, there is a reason. There are two reasons. I think first off, we don't know how much we're going to get, right? So sure, could a graph be provided that has a projected amount that we're going to get? I guess, right? But it would be, it would be a projection, I don't think it would, it wouldn't be accurate. I don't, it might look better in terms of what our district fiscal commitment may be, but to me, it should be smoke and mirrors. So I don't think it's, it would be honest or authentic, that's the first reason. So it's really like, hey, if we have a commitment, we have made a commitment, a priority of scaling out this model, we, if we do that, I want to make sure that everybody is aware of what the district fiscal commitment will be with the money that we have received. Now, as I mentioned, do I think we're going to get a vast amount of the $32 million? Yes. Based on the applications that our schools have submitted, based on the state grant application, yes. But I think too, Matthew, it was really pressing upon the fact of how important it is to continue to advocate for those funds. It's to show you how important it is that we do receive those grant funds. And so talking about the advocacy, talking about local and state agencies, ensuring that we get out in front of people who are making these decisions, that we do get that money this year, that we do get more money next year for community schools. I think that that was another important reason that that graph was presented the way it was.
Thank you. And lastly, sorry.
If I could just very briefly say, that's where the data is so important, because the data is the ammunition we're going to use to go out and get that money.
And I know this is thinking very far ahead, but five years from now, what's the vision there when we're looking to the future with questions about funding? What's the future going to look like, especially with regards to the state?
So part of becoming a community school and receiving these grant funds is to build a sustainability plan. And so in trustee Hazen, it's going to be important to build those relationships with the philanthropies. It's going to be important to plan appropriately to be able to fund schools to continue this work. But ultimately, part of the grant fund, and what we're going to have to present to the state in year three, I believe it is, is a sustainability plan and a model. So schools don't just stop being community schools because they don't receive grant funding, right? The vision is for these schools to continue to be community schools. How they receive those supports, it may look a little bit different, but that's part of the collective work of all of us to ensure that they are provided and equipped with the resources they need to continue being authentic community schools.
Thank you. And I'm excited as to looking at and learning more about these sustainability plans. Thank you.
Trustee Nepomassino.
Firstly, thank you all for your beautiful presentation. So my question is, in regards to student engagement, you specifically mentioned collaborating with ASBs. So my first question with that is, what exactly does that collaboration look like? And secondly, I find that ASB students tend to be very high-performing, involved students. So I was curious as to how you plan to reach students who may not be as involved on their campus.
So speaking specifically to secondary, in terms of ASBs, the meeting that I actually came from, which is the Community Schools Spring Institute, the teacher coach at Hoover and the site coordinator at Hoover came up to me and said, Jason, we want to, like, do you want to see this data of students? Like, can we show it to you? And they were just so fired up to share it because of the plan that they have to ensure that they are garnering the voice of as many students as possible. And so it's not just through ASB that they are gathering this information. It goes back to ensuring that we have our teachers on board, and they understand the model, and they understand the purpose of gathering voice from all educational partners. And so at Hoover specifically, and again, every school is going to do it differently based on what is best for their school community, but at Hoover specifically, they have embedded it in all of the English classes. So students are completing a survey as part of what we're doing today, at the same time, English class, all students, we need you to complete the survey, we want to hear your voice. And they have hundreds and hundreds, they just started today, and I saw hundreds of responses already, and they were coming in as I was watching. So I am confident that that is a model that can work. And as we bring on Cohort Two schools, what's great is that we were able to learn best practices of what is going well with Cohort One. And we'll be able to share with those ASBs and those site leaders and those educational partners, hey, here's something that worked at a school, you're going to do what you know is best for your school community in terms of students, but these are some things that we saw that worked.
Can I also respond real quick?
To kind of action plans, so also at Hoover, I know that there's a plan to do specific focus groups with students with, who are chronically absent or habitual truant students, gang-involved students. So there's a, there's a plan to engage specifically those students in focus groups to get their perspective on what they want to see in their school and what supports they need. I was also last week and this week at Millennial Tech, working with their ASV, and the students themselves brought up how to engage those students that don't participate, how to engage those students that aren't often in school. So they themselves are very aware of gathering that voice and making sure it's represented and present. So those are just two examples of the actual work of targeting students and ensuring that their voices are included.
And I think that's a credit to this model and the messaging of community schools, the fact that students understand what it is and want to be a part of it and do feel heard. You heard the student in the testimonial share that she's appreciative that her voice and her friend's voice is being heard. And so I appreciate that very much about this model, and I'm excited for what students have to say.
Thank you. And I just wanted to also thank all of you guys and all of those on the committee and everyone at the community school sites for all you're doing, and also very excited about this work. And I think it's some of the most important work we're actually doing in the district right now, and looking forward to the pipeline schools being involved as well, and just the thoughtful approach that you're taking is really impressive. Just from a, I've come from a public health educator standpoint, so I'm just curious because that's such an important need of so many families, it's just basic medical needs. What is being done, and I'm, you know, and I know it probably varies, but are we addressing that at the community schools? And are there, I know in some cases you're partnering with different medical groups in the community, and kind of what that looks like, and what kind of services provided? Is it just for the students? Is it for the whole family? So if you can provide just a little information about that?
I think it's important to note that, that yes, I think that that's work that is going to be more, we're going to be engaging more next year when the needs and assets assessment is complete. Of course, we can make assumptions based on communities that we serve about what they need. But again, if we're going to do this right, if we can get actual data from our parents and caregivers and all educational partners, that this is a specific need that we have, that we can go out and we will make that partnership, we will bring that to the site. That will be the priority based on the needs and assets assessment and where those resources that the state is giving us are going to be directed to. So I think that as we revisit this next year, or whenever we have the opportunity to share with you again, I think that that's, we'll really be able to nail down, this is what this site specifically needed based on the feedback of the educational partners, and this is specifically what we did in terms of public health. and this is specifically what we did in terms of public health.
Fantastic. Thank you. I know there's a lot of organizations out there similar to what they were, we were talking about that would, that would be fantastic to partner with some already, just like you and be like, let's, let's make it happen now. I want it all to happen right now. So do we have any other comments? Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Barrera.
Now, thank you, President Raya. This conversation is fantastic and I, I've spent a lot of time in conversations and work around community organizing. And a couple of things that I just want to lift up in, in the, the work that you're doing is so rigorous and so intentional. And community organizing, done the right way, is incredibly powerful and transformative, but if not done the right way, falls apart every time. And so, you know, Dr. Peterson, with your expertise, Jason, with, with your experience, you know, and expertise, you know, coming into it, Isabella with the student voice, you're, you're entering this work intending to do it the right way. And, and, and you've got access, you know, to national resources, you know, to help us keep our focus on doing it the right way. But fundamentally, I think what all of our challenge is going to be is, are we able to continue this kind of conversation? Because it's so easy to eventually have this program drift and, you know, and so now we're throwing surveys at people who we don't have any relationships with and what kind of information do we actually get from that? Or we're, you know, providing a service here and there that is not really about, you know, transforming what, what our families need. So I think as Cody talked about, what community schools really is doing is redefining the purpose of a school in, in our communities. And that means that we have to, I think it's our job as a, as a board and superintendent's job to protect your ability to do this the right way. Part of that absolutely is about the continuing advocacy at the state and federal level. This is a, a popular idea right now that can't just become a fad. And, 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 and part of that is, you know, it always worries me in this case at the state level, when a funder says, I'm going to give you some seed money to create a pilot and then you figure out how to sustain this going forward. That's not going to work, right? Absolutely, yeah. The money has to be ongoing. The day that we don't have an organizer, community schools coordinator at that school is the day this all falls apart at that school. And so, so it's, it's, you're coming at this in the exact right way with the right design. And I think having these kinds of conversations is really important. And I think what that helps is it helps commit us all to making sure that this process is done the right way. And when the process is done the right way, there, you know, we can't even imagine the benefits that we're going to see, you know, to our kids and our families and to our schools. But it can really, there's always that risk of this thing kind of being a silo that people just forget about. So that's, that's, that's all of our job collectively to keep coming back to the core principles that you're working from.
And, and I would add, it's incredibly important that we are aligned. So as we think about the concentric circle model, we think about focusing on the students and the, the staffs at the school site that are closest to the students. I want to say it's going to be important for us, we, we, I know we're talking about state, federal revenue, I get that. We can't get enamored in a hundred different initiatives either. Like, we need a few things that we can do really well, that we can invest in because as trustee Cutroneano said, you know, what about these dollars? And I know it was tongue in cheek to Drew, but it's incumbent on us to be fiscally responsible. And, and we, we just cannot try to be about all things. And so we have a few areas of focus in terms of student safety, our, the health and safety of our children and mental health. We, we've talked about that. We talk about family engagement. We, we talk about supporting our students to feel a sense of belonging and we're focused on equity. We have to be very, very careful because I think we can get out of the hand and folks are going to come at us to do this and be a part of this and do this. And if you look at our LCAP, it's 200 plus pages. That's our responsibility. That's my responsibility. And so I'm going to remind us as a collective team that trustee Cutroneano, we cannot be about all things because if we try, we're not going to be able to afford it. And we're not going to be able to invest in the, the efforts that are really making a difference for our students.
Vice President Hazen?
And I do want to add just one thing because I agree that this is critically important work and transformative work. And I don't think we have to actually do all of it. All you described, you know, the food assistance, a lot of the frontline service delivery. We exist in a resource rich environment with countless service providers whose resources we can leverage to impact families. And so I think that's the other piece as we think about the resources we may or may not have a few years from now, how do we build those relationships with providers who have the dollars, the staff and the capacity to meet the needs as identified by the data to do what we need to do?
Yeah, I was just going to add to, or agree with that, especially when it comes to like working with medical groups, for example, there's a lot of nonprofit groups out there that are not going to expect us to pay. Well, you know, but they're fantastic to partner with and they're, they'll be ready to jump on board and, and help out, so. Do we have anyone else? Anyone? Anyone? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ASB president.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Next, we will consider the Board Consent Agenda. Items F1, minutes of regular and special meetings. F2, Board Advisory Committees Reports and/or Briefing Summaries. F3, Proposed Schedule of Board Education Meetings, January through June 2024. F4, Resolution in the Matter of Support of Participation in Earth Day 2023 Events. And F5, Application for the 2023 Magnet School Assistance Program Grant. Is there a motion on items F1 through F5?
Second.
Oh, was that trustee Cutroneano? Okay. And second by trustee Nepomassino. Okay, we don't have any speakers. Do we have any trustees have any questions?
I do.
Okay. Trustee, Vice President Hazen?
Yes, I do have a question on F5, the Magnet School Assistance Program Grant. So I love that we're working to secure about what, $2 million a year in new funding for arts magnet programs over the next five years. But sort of, this is a follow on to the previous conversation about sustainability. And I think I love what trustee Barrera said, that there are a certain number of dollars required to sustain this work, whether this work is community schools work or this work is arts magnet schools work. And so I guess my question is, and some of the things that come to mind for me is just around sustainability. We're building out media arts maker spaces and investing in tools to use those spaces. We are investing, we will have dedicated FTEs to support this work. And what happens when the dollars go away and how do we keep doing it? And I say it, not that we shouldn't go after these dollars and we shouldn't do the work, but we need to be really, really intentional in planning to support this because I've seen, I think we've all seen how magnet dollars go away and a lot of times the really amazing programming and staff can also go away. So I'm hopeful that just like we're doing with community schools, we can be really intentional in building that sustainability plan. I'm also curious if we're thinking about how Prop 28 dollars can be part of that sustainability. And then some of the other things that stood out to me in terms of the grant goals is, as I look through the grant proposal, it's focused on a lot of adult activities and it'd be really great to have goals that reflect what students know and can do. And I'm curious, so not specific to this new proposal, but if we can hear in the future about, so one of the big goals is about maintain, so diversifying schools, increasing enrollment, implementing these magnet themes with fidelity. For schools who have already received this funding in past years, how are we doing, particularly when the dollars run out? So lots of questions and I'm supportive of this item.
Thank you. I, I think the first thing I would say is probably, and I know Maria Nichols is here. Thank you. It's good to see you.
Hi.
And Maria Montgomery, and I know Russ is here. I don't think they would disagree with any of the questions. I, I think they, those questions are, are spot on. I think it actually goes with our previous conversation of making sure that we are deliberate around the schools and deliberate about the expansion. I, I think if, if we try to do all things for all schools without them wanting, I think that's problematic. And so how many schools are designed with specific folk I? And then what supports can we offer? And so I think those go hand in hand. The other piece is our continued advocacy around Prop 28 and needing the flexibility because it is limited. And so I think that's a great question. So I would say, and certainly if the three of you have anything else to offer, but I think it's being very deliberate and not trying to expand too fast, too soon. And also, one of the things I've noticed is we have done a pretty good job in the initial phase of implementation.
Yeah, when the money's there.
And then, and then the money goes away and, you know, we see it with like Promethean boards, right? We, we, we put things in place, but what about the replacement of, of those? And what about the staff to replace them? And so again, I think it goes back to really allowing the school sites to determine the work that they're focused on, the dollars it's going to take to really train staff, ongoing professional learning without the, you know, just us saying as a central office, hey, we're going to have 20 schools, much like the community. I mean, we'd like to have more schools, but as they're saying, we need to be very careful with trying to expand without the dollars. And so that, that's my initial, I know these are deep, rich questions, but I, I would suggest, you know, Maria, for many years worked magnet schools and, and for a while, we were like, why even call schools magnet schools? Because they weren't receiving magnet dollars.
That's right.
And Russ, I mean, for years, didn't have the dollars.
Right.
And now we're talking about, you know, Prop 28 versus the block grant. And so we have a responsibility as well. This has been ongoing for 20, 30, 40 years. So if we know this, then we have to be careful with the dollars, do the advocacy before and not try to expand too soon. And, and for example, you mentioned earlier, you know, we implemented STEAM. And then all of a sudden, resource teachers weren't available. That, that's a problem. And so if we have STEAM in fewer schools, perhaps we can sustain resource teachers longer and really, you know, root the work and build a culture around this that then the staff can take on without that resource perhaps. Anything else?
Just waiters.
One comment just before they speak. This is a conversation that I'm sure Russ is delighted to engage in because when I first came on the board seven years ago, we were cutting, we had nothing. We had absolutely nothing. And he started with the VAPA Foundation and now we have monies coming in on various levels. But one of the things I know he was frustrated about a couple of years ago was the fact that you were developing long range plans and we weren't responding as trustees to help him to figure all these things out. So now you have the trustee saying, how can we help? So now we'd like to hear from you.
Well, I, I want to, I do want to, yes, we have dollars. We have to be very focused on where we're putting our dollars. I just want to, I want to put that out there.
Absolutely, but it's a larger plan. That's the whole point.
I understand. We have been successful with some one-time dollars. When the dollars go away, we should be prepared on supporting our schools. So I, I just.
And maybe this was before your time because we started the VAPA Foundation in order to ensure that we don't cut everything and go back to nothing. Am I right? That was the intent of the VAPA Foundation where this past year, we raised what, a million dollars or whatever? That is the long-term strategy to solicit funds from the state, from the feds, but also, see, I've been around too long because I've seen us cut VAPA over and over again, not realizing that when you cut that, you cut the children because some of them only come to school because of VAPA. So unless you're going to cut the child, don't cut VAPA because they only come for music or art or whatever it is, or theater, then they'll do the literacy and all these other things. But you've got to see it as a whole package. We can't go back to that day of, oh, now we don't have dollars, let's cut VAPA. No, that's not the way it works. It's a whole child. And I'm sorry, I'm preaching. That's okay. I'll, I'll.
No, I, I just think it's, I think it's important though for us to just be crystal clear. We have said we don't have adequate funding. If we don't have adequate funding, we can't fund all things. That's all I'm saying. It's our responsibility to set the priorities and fund those things. That, that simple.
Okay, are we going to have our, let's let our, do these poor people talk that have been standing here waiting.
Thank you. And good evening. Thank you Superintendent Jackson for introducing us and trustees for asking the questions and engaging with us in the conversation because we are actually very excited about the collaboration that we have across our departments and what we're doing with our schools and engaging them. So I'm going to have Maria Nichols begin around that question of sustainability and then Russ can talk about the, the exciting work we're doing with Prop 28 as well.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It was wonderful to see all of you and I cannot tell you how much we appreciate this conversation. I don't know if I can bend this low enough for me. There we go. Sustainability has been a core concern of ours with each successive magnet grant cycle. When I first started this work in 2013, these grant cycles were three-year cycles. And even at the federal level, there was keen awareness that the three-year grant cycle simply didn't allow for building towards sustainability. Inevitably, we would get to the point where sites and teachers and surrounding communities were understanding the goals, truly engaging in the work, beginning to get to a critical point of launching the work and the funds would be gone. We would do the best we could to build the expertise in the teachers and the commitment in the community and the joy in the theme and give them all the tools and professional learning we could in the hopes that the grant could, or the theme could sustain. In 2016, when we began building the STEAM cycle in the Linda Vista community, for the first time, we had a curricular partnership in the brand new district STEAM department. And that partnership with the oncoming district STEAM resource teachers and the pipeline of they had created with CTE joining in, gave us an intense partnership in the work that we had not had previously in building out the magnet pathways and the themes. The STEAM teachers from the district funded STEAM department actually worked side by side with us and continued to support those three schools. and continued to support those three schools post-award so that those teachers and schools had a resource still embedded in the district. When we exited out of that cycle and began the 2020 cycle, at that point, the federal grant shifted to a five-year cycle because of the same concerns that we had. In the timelines that we build out for these grant implementations, we now build a timeline that includes getting to critical mass with the work that we're doing and then thinking through sustainability planning with our teachers, our community, our partners that we've brought onboard through the grant. So we are in the midst of that first grant, a five-year grant cycle. And because these grants now have shifted towards the arts, we learned from that 2016 cycle and found the perfect opportunity to partner with VAPA. And so we actually moved the grant into the VAPA umbrella. The project manager now reports directly to Russ. So our project manager is sitting side by side with the entire VAPA team in weekly meetings where he is not only sharing out the growth process, the goals, the vision, but drawing from the VAPA department, being introduced to resources networked so that he is continually co-mingling the work of the magnet with the ongoing work with VAPA. And then with Russ's keen awareness of the trajectory, the vision, the planning, we will be well situated for that intense support post-grant. With this 2023 cycle, we're continuing to build with VAPA and building in an added caveat, which is that we're really looking at the media arts as a skill that all students are going to need to build. The reality that our world is becoming increasingly multimodal and all of our children need to learn to think critically in their consumption of and their creation of multimodal texts. And so we see that what we are going to be building with this grant cycle will have benefit throughout the district. We are hopeful of creating these media art maker spaces as learning hubs for the district, spaces where the new media arts VAPA resource teacher can come in to offer professional development for teachers across the district, where hopefully partnership with literacy can come in and begin to think about the world of multimodal texts and the co-mingling, the intersection of media arts and literacy, and do so in partnership with three schools that are on a trajectory of learning with teachers and students that can actually lean into the conversation, share their processes, share their challenges, problem solve with the teachers from around the district coming in. So that ideally, these are, we leave these schools after five years as hubs of learning where the teachers have the continuous conversations of VAPA coming in, other parts of the district coming in to continue to build learning opportunities and can share the expertise that they're building as well. So this is a vision that we're just now, you know, beginning to think through. If we're fortunate enough to be awarded, we'll launch those conversations with our schools and really begin to plan forward with our partners. Turn it over to Russ because I know he can add on to there.
Aren't we fortunate that we still have Maria Nichols working with us? I mean, I don't have a lot more to say because I think she's outlined it so thoughtfully. But the sustainability piece, which has been, I'm glad I was here for the community schools conversation because it's very parallel in many ways, right? The money goes away. We have seen in the district over the history of what happens when that magnet money dries up. I have seen for myself those schools, what happens and how they are scrambling to pull it together to retain their arts identity. So that is something we have to continue to work through. But what I can say is, is when we've had these grants, they've had ripple effects across the district. The STEAM grant has had ripple effects across the district. That is moving across all of our elementary schools. These arts education grants set up models that inform us, inform the teachers, so we can make sure that we're providing the best instruction and how we'll have ripples across the district. That is something that I've always thought our arts magnet schools should be those beacons, those places that we all turn to and look and say, how can we do arts education best? Prop 28 gives us an opportunity to have a sustainability around arts education that we have not seen since I was in fifth grade in California. Now, it won't pay for everything, but it will pay for a very healthy increase and it'll give us an opportunity to do things as smartly as possible. So I'm very excited about the opportunity. The opportunity to work with Maria and the magnet schools team, integrated within the VAPA department, has had a lot of power, a lot of power to make sure my team is learning from them and they are learning for us and we're spreading it out through the district.
Thank you. Are you ready to vote? Okay, I think we had a motion and a second. So let's start with our student members. Trustee Couturiano.
Aye.
And trustee Nepomassino.
Aye.
All others, please vote. Okay, and the vote passes unanimously with our students concurring. And thank you so much for speakers for addressing that. That was actually really interesting and really helped us understand that process better. Okay, moving along. We will now consider item G1, New Administrative Regulation and Exhibits and Revisions to Existing Board Policy and Exhibits. It does say that twice. Is there a motion on item G1?
So long.
Okay. Dr. Whitehurst Payne has moved and trustee Nepomassino has made a second on that motion. Okay, no speakers. Any questions, comments? Okay, let's have our student board members vote. Let's start with trustee Nepomassino.
Aye.
Trustee Couturiano.
Aye.
Everyone else? All right, and that passes unanimously with our students concurring. All right, we're on to superintendent's consent agenda. We will now consider items I-1 through I-52, the superintendent's consent agenda. The following items were previously withdrawn by staff. There's a few of them. I-20, I-22, I-31 through I-36, I-47, I-48, and I-50. Is there a motion on items I-1 through I-52? Okay, motion by trustee Barrera, second. Trustee Pedersen. Okay, any questions, comments? We'll start with our students voting. Let's start with trustee Couturiano.
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee Nepomassino.
Aye.
Okay, everyone else? Okay, motion passes unanimously with our students concurring on that. Now we're getting down to our public participation. Oops, sorry, didn't mean to hit that button again. We, let's see, we will now receive public testimony on non-agenda items. And we're going to start with our in-person. And let's start with, and I'm sorry if I'm saying your name incorrectly, but Bryce Nyswenger. Is Bryce here? And let's see, you'll have two minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Bryce Nyswenger. I would like to petition to add a second UTK class at Juarez Elementary School. It's a 90% Spanish immersion program, and it can only be entered in UTK through first grade. The second, the school's numbers are going down and the kids are having to have two grades in one classroom. The best way to keep the numbers up is to allow two classrooms at UTK so that kids don't start and stay at other schools instead of Juarez when they want Juarez in the first place. There are two kindergarten classes, therefore two UTK classes are needed. The waitlist is not even able to accommodate siblings of currently enrolled students that applied to early choice, myself included. Putting undue strain on families by separating siblings or forcing currently enrolled siblings to other schools in the district or charters where their siblings are accepted. As Juarez is a late-start school, a 1.5-hour difference in start and end times from other schools is very taxing on families. Many families will choose not to go to TK at all and rather than separate their kids, which won't help our education system. This decision affects many people and numbers will continue to fall if another class is not added. Please note, this is most important because it is 90% Spanish immersion and it is imperative to start as early as possible. I spoke with the principal at Juarez, Dr. Lemos, about the possibility of a second UTK class. And Juarez has the room for one. It has the principal's approval and all the teachers would like one as well. There are nine resident children on the waitlist that didn't even get in and 16 choice kids and growing, which is more than enough to add a second class at Juarez. Bay Park was able to add a second UTK class right before school started this year. And I really hope it's possible to add one sooner than right before school. If you as a board members have any sway in adding a second UTK class at Juarez Elementary, please help or direct me and other parents to someone who can. Thank you very much for your help.
Thank you, and thank you for being patient. Your kids are so well behaved back there. I couldn't have got my kids that age to sit for that long. And then we next have Adam Gardner.
Good evening. I'm here for a similar, well, the same reason. I'm the parent of several students in the San Diego Unified School System. And I'm also here to petition for an additional UTK class be added to the wonderful and unique language immersion school, Juarez Elementary for three, hopefully succinct reasons. There's demand. Currently, there are nine resident students and 16 choice students on the waitlist and growing. Two, due to the unique nature of the language immersion program, students can't easily join after the first grade, yet students still leave due to relocation or other life reasons. Due to the aforementioned other two reasons, grades often need to be combined in advanced grades, such as a combined second and third grade. We believe that, we believe adding an additional UTK class to Juarez Elementary would help meet current demand for an amazing language immersion program and also bolster the number of students in the later grades so classes wouldn't need to be combined. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Amy Mullins Boychuk.
I'm changed because I thought we could do three minutes.
Uh, two minutes, please.
Well, I'm going to have to speak really fast. Because of the restorative discipline policy, my son was assaulted on school campus. It wasn't just a middle school fight. It wasn't someone standing up to their bully. It was an unprovoked chokehold that resulted in injury and trauma. My son lost his carefree innocence because of you. When I made you aware of this incident, you promised that you would address it. Unfortunately, the inaction of the entire school board speaks louder than words. When Mr. Pedersen asked me how to make my family whole, my answer is, turn back time. Make this incident a figment of my imagination. Take it back. Make it never happen. On March 19th, I emailed you, Mrs. Anne, a direct and personal email. Mom to mom, do you remember what your response was? Cold, heartless silence. Nothing. Just recently, my son's offender was in the possession of a blade from a pencil sharpener. The student was pretending to cut themselves with it or maybe even successfully did it. We aren't privy to the truth because Principal Pearson diverts every single incident on his campus as hearsay rumors or false allegations, although the students that witnessed it were called into the office to write statements of what they saw with their very own eyes. This student is violent and aggressive. They should not be in possession of any sharp object. Principal Pearson has stated that this particular student is resistant to restorative discipline and boasted about how smart and calculated they are, that they know how to push it to the limit. Mr. Jackson, when I followed your restorative practices and exercised my right to a face-to-face meeting with the parents of my son's offender, those very parents attacked me, Mr. Hill, and our son on social media. They cyberbullied my son, slandered his name, defamed his character, and supported and encouraged what their child did to my son. In fact, they stated that their child earned what they did to my son and that us playing the victim role is the reason why whites are losing America. The parents of my son's offender had the privilege of canceling and not showing up to the face-to-face meeting or being held accountable for their child's violence. On March 5th, I demanded to meet face-to-face with you, Principal Pearson, Cody Pedersen, and Chief of Police Officer Contreras so that I could discuss the safety concerns for my son. Mr. Jackson, do you remember what your response was? Silence. Zero response. You aren't worried about the safety of my son or any other student. You have shown zero concern to me in regards to this whole situation.
Thank you.
If you were worried about my son's safety, you wouldn't have adopted a policy that only protects offenders. You went from zero tolerance to complete tolerance without even training schools to implement this policy. The restorative discipline policy offers...
Thank you. Your time's up.
...for justice for innocent victims.
Okay.
Thanks for that.
Okay, next we have Sandra Appeling.
Good evening, and my name is Sandra Appeling. I'm here to follow up on remarks I made at the March school board meeting in regards to inclusion specifically with special education. As a reminder, my children attend Grant School and my son is a part of the moderate to severe special education program. A decision was made to close that program without any input from those affected by the change and in spite of data showing that Grant has better-than-district-average outcomes for students with disabilities. These BIPOC disabled students are being singled out to be removed from their high-performing school where they're continually seeing successes year over year. I'm here with members of my school community because we are following up and following Dr. Jackson's words of action on being unapologetic about our commitment to equity and inclusion. Since the March meeting, my husband and I have had the opportunity to meet with Deputy Superintendent Dr. Bagula. We left that meeting with a feeling, a sense of being heard for the first time since we learned of this planned change. We have not gotten that sense from our school administration, from other district administrators in our area or from the special education district team. We left that meeting with confidence and gratitude in Dr. Bagula's decision-making process and her commitment to look closely at this situation and help it be addressed. Our school community is going to continue to be committed in the preservation of that full community. And we are going to be continued to be committed in the preservation of this program on our school campus and in equity and inclusion so that all abilities are represented on our campus. We will continue to keep this topic at the top of the mind while the review is being held. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next we have Jennifer Madeiros.
Good evening, Dr. Jackson and members of the school board. First, I would like to thank you for guiding San Diego Unified towards meaningful systemic shifts that will impact the ability of all students to learn and grow in a way that elevates and celebrates their identities, their interests, and their aspirations. As an administrator in a neighboring district, I rely on SDUSD's willingness to act as a beacon for equitable systemic shifts. As a parent, I appreciate the ability to reference equity-minded board policy when I'm advocating for my children and for the other children at Grant TK-8. I'm addressing you this evening in my capacity as PTA president to request that you reconsider the decision to remove Grant's moderate and severe special education programs from our Gecko community for three key reasons. First, this decision was not made in a way that designs for belonging. How is power shared in this scenario to consider the insights and experiences of the educational partners closest to the source? Second, this decision will mostly impact Grant's families of color and displaces the majority of our BIPOC-certificated and classified staff. While I understand that these individuals will not lose their access to services or their jobs, they will lose their homeschool, they will lose their learning community, and ours will be less vibrant without them. Finally, this decision prioritizes the comfort of adults over the needs of young people. Our youth deserve to stay in a proven program with staff who know them, love them, and have built a thriving learning community where children prosper not just academically but socially, emotionally, and in their functional life skills. There has to be a better way. Tonight, we saw presentations from amazing young people and we mourned those who left us too soon. They are all that matters. As leaders, it's not enough to say that we value children. We must be brave and fight for them, especially when it's uncomfortable, especially when the dignity and the humanity of our children, our families, and our educators have not been prioritized. Please exhibit the creative courage to reconsider this structural change or at the very least, use the 23-24 school year to build a team who can design a solution that is right for the humans it is meant to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now it looks like we have two people joining us virtually. The first is John Butorff. John, are you available? Do we have John? Nope, okay.
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, yes. Go ahead, John.
Yes, good evening, President Baso and board. My name is John Botorf with CleanEarthForKids.org. In 2021, the SDUSD Board passed a resolution to transition to renewable energy. I ask you to now commit to electrify everything in the district. We need 100% clean renewable energy to protect our air and save our planet. Please move forward with onsite solar, electric buses and vehicles, and all electric buildings by 2030. It is imperative to stop burning natural gas, which is just a marketing term for methane. Methane is a hazardous indoor air pollutant and a major contributor to climate change. The use of methane in homes is shown to increase the risk of asthma and other respiratory diseases. Research shows gas stoves in homes are responsible for almost 13% of US childhood asthma cases. As I'm sure you know, asthma is the most common chronic illness among children, the largest cause of scoliosis, and is the third-leading cause of hospitalization among children under the age of 15. Asthma also disproportionately affects communities of color. Almost half of the air pollution from California buildings comes from the burning of methane, mainly for heat and hot water. Building electrification is an important step in not only fighting climate change but also reducing air pollution. Methane has no place anywhere near children and youth. Our climate situation is at the point of no return. We must all take immediate action now. Please electrify the district. All electric buildings provide health benefits to students, teachers, and staff. Modern ventilation systems means better indoor air quality, so less viruses, bacteria, and dust. Students spend around 1,000 hours per year in a school, so healthy air is incredibly important. Installing electric heat pumps means high-efficiency heating and cooling, which will save the district money. Not needing fossil fuels means protecting the planet while having stable and predictable energy costs. Electric school buses cost less to use and maintain, are quiet, and don't produce toxic exhaust, which protects our air. There are state and federal programs to switch to electric buses. Please set a deadline for 100% electric buses and service trucks by 2025. We must stop burning fossil fuels around students, especially diesel. Please take action to stop burning all fossil fuels by San Diego Unified by 2030. Thank you from CleanEarthForKids.org.
Thank you very much. Theo, oh, that was John. Okay, now we're going to go back, we have a few more people join. We have Theo Martin? Martin? Is Theo available?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yep, we sure can.
Awesome. Hello, my name is Theo Martin. I'm a senior at Mount Everest Academy and an intern for the Youth Fee Oil Campaign, and I'm here to urge you to commit to electrifying all district infrastructure by 2030. This includes swiftly transitioning to all electric buses, vehicles, and buildings using 100% renewable energy sources. According to the latest IPCC report, global emissions must be cut in half by 2030 to give us a less than 70% chance of staying below a 2°C rise. And this daunting prediction could likely be incorrect because the IPCC has a history of being too conservative. A 50% reduction may not be enough. So to adequately safeguard our future, we must aim for 100% renewables by 2030. Building electrification is a vital component of this transition. Building electrification is financially feasible for SDUSD. As you've all likely experienced, SDGNE is currently inflating the cost of gas to unprecedented rates. This dramatic trend is not reflected in electricity rates. Also, the price of fossil fuels notoriously fluctuates. Renewables don't have the same issue. Through onsite solar programs, SDUSD will be able to generate its own electricity, a significantly more reliable and affordable option. Numerous state and federal grants are available to supplement upfront costs. SDUSD has a history of elevating student voices and prioritizing climate action. Today, I ask you to continue this trend and join the beginnings of a national movement to electrify all schools. We deserve healthy learning environments and safe futures. Thank you.
Thank you, Theo. We next have Serena Pelka joining us. Serena, are you available?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, my name is Serena Pelka. I'm a policy advocate with Climate Action Campaign. We are a nonprofit organization based here in San Diego with the simple mission to create a zero-carbon future through effective and equitable policy action. I'm here tonight after organizing and advocating with students and other fellow advocates wanting to see a zero-carbon future here in San Diego and wanting our students and school staff to have clean air to breathe and safe spaces to learn and thrive in. Please consider and adopt a building electrification policy that implements all-electric construction for new buildings and whole-site modernization and that removes fossil fuels from the district infrastructure by 2030. Thank you.
Thank you, Serena. Next, we have Peter Sloan. Are you there, Peter?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I work at San Diego 350 and I live with my wife and our toddler, Eleanor, in Golden Hill. I'm calling today to ask the school board to commit to a fossil-free future and electrify everything in our school district, 100% clean renewable energy, onsite solar, electric buses and vehicles, and electric buildings no later than 2030. The global community has agreed through the UN IPCC process to limit dangerous planetary heating to 1.5°C. To achieve this goal, every government agency must take all available steps to decarbonize as rapidly as possible. San Diego Unified must lead the way. Researchers at the University of Leeds have shown that thousands of heat-related child deaths could be prevented if temperature increases are limited to the 1.5°C target. The findings show that since roughly 2009, heat-related child mortality has been at least double what it would have been without climate change. If society makes no concerted efforts to cut carbon emissions, heat-related child mortality is projected to double by 2049 compared to 2005 levels and could reach upper estimates of 38,000 child deaths per year in 2049. To avoid this dystopian future, we require rapid cuts to carbon emissions across all sectors in line with the IPCC target of limiting global warming to 1.5°C. I urge you to prioritize rapid, just decarbonization for the health and safety of your students and children around the world. If funding is not available, then fight for it. My daughter is counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Next, we have Emma Wyble.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, we sure can. Go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Emma Wyble and I'm a sophomore at La Jolla High School and a member of San Diego 350's Youth for Climate. I'm here today to ask the school board to commit to a fossil-free SDUSD and to electrify everything in our schools. This means 100% clean renewable electricity, onsite solar, electric buses and vehicles, and electric buildings. In April 2021, the board passed the Youth Fee Oil Resolution, which included a promise to transition to renewable energy sources with the urgency called for by the climate crisis. At this point, we all know that the urgency called for by the climate crisis means acting now, in the best interest of our students and our future. Not only is electric infrastructure more efficient, cost-effective, and trustworthy in the event of extreme weather, but the elimination of fossil fuels from our school buildings and diesel fuel from our buses is essential in improving the overall climate of our community. The board has supported student climate activists in the past, which is why we urge you to uphold your commitment to our climate, our students' health and future, and building a better community by passing the building electrification resolution. Because for all schools due to prepare us for our future, we have to have one first. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Emma. And next, we are down to Ann Feeny. Do we have Ann?
Yes, hi, my name is Ann Feeny and I'm a volunteer for the San Diego Building Electrification Coalition. I urge the school board to commit to a fossil-free school district and electrify everything in the district. Several recent IPCC reports have told us in no uncertain terms that we must stop burning fossil fuels as soon as possible to prevent the worst impacts of climate change. We urge you to electrify everything by 2030, buildings, buses, and other district vehicles. Buildings that are all-electric are healthier, and heat pump space heating provides both heat and air conditioning with the same unit, providing the schools with a healthy and comfortable learning environment. Electric appliances and vehicles use less energy to run and can be charged by solar panels. We also ask that you transition to 100% renewable energy through San Diego Community Power and also to maximize onsite solar installations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Is Miles Isquirdo available?
Yeah, can you hear me?
I sure can, go ahead, Miles.
One second. Hi, my name is Miles Isquirdo and I'm a junior at La Jolla High School. I'm here today to ask the school board to commit to a fossil-free SDUSD and to electrify everything in our school district, which includes 100% clean renewable electricity, onsite solar, electric buses and vehicles, and electric buildings. We spend approximately 1,000 hours per year in school, which makes transforming classrooms into healthy, efficient, carbon-neutral spaces of the utmost importance, especially when short-term and long-term health of students and staff is at risk. We know that diesel fuels in our buses and that is bad for the health of our community and we know that fossil fuels are bad for the health of our earth. Now is the time to go beyond just knowing and actually making the changes needed to protect our community. This is why we are calling on the board to make these valuable changes and to electrify our infrastructure and to start switching to renewable energy now. Thank you.
Thank you, Miles. And we have Cassie Blinch. Is Cassie available? Nope, okay, we don't have Cassie. How about Kimberly McCollins? I don't know if I'm saying that right.
Collester.
Collester, okay, no Kimberly, okay. Did I get everyone? We have anyone else?
I think number seven.
Number seven. Tanisha?
Tanisha John.
Oh, okay, Tanisha Jean Martin?
She has to unmute herself.
Oh, can you please unmute Tanisha?
Hi, yes, this is Tanisha Jean Martin, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, thank you so much for the space and the time to speak. I'm here as well with my peers from, and partners from San Diego 350 as one hat. Another is with San Diego Building Electrification Coalition as the chair for our Equity Working Group. I'm also here with Mothers Out Front, being a mother myself, moving forward to wanting to talk about fossil fuel-free San Diego for our schools, for our children, and also hold the position as a climate community director at San Diego Urban Sustainability Coalition. Sounds like a lot, which means that I'm doing a lot in our community, especially our communities of concern. And what I want to bring forward is, as all in the support of electrifying everything to 100% to make a fossil-free San Diego, I also want to make sure that we're keeping in mind not just the building itself, but also what is within. And what is within is with our students that are in there and I really want to push forward, which I have before, on our pathway program to make sure that we're incorporating green jobs for, make sure that our students know what green space is. We're moving forward with changing schools, well, they should know that. They should know what's happening forward because that is the future we're leading forward to with electric vehicles and everything else, changing our workshops, the shops that we're doing for mechanicism inside our schools, maybe bringing electric vehicles, show them a different pathway for what we're going towards. And with doing that, not just within our high schools, but also bringing it forward to our elementary and middle schools, because if we do not bring a passion for them to understand what is happening by the time they get to high school, it may not be a pathway they choose. I know these are huge aspects right now for our students because I have a son who just graduated from high school and I have a daughter who's going to be a freshman. And there's these pathways for a student for medicine, for sports medicine, for just, there's a whole plethora, right, that we know of that are going for these students, for these pathways, but not one for these green jobs. And so for them knowing what solar paneling is and just different things that are going to be really important that we're moving towards our future in the way anyway. So I really want to incorporate and make sure that we understand how important it is to think about the students within and change the program, the whole system itself, not just the building. I'm very available, we're working on a climate ambassador program for our youth right now to hopefully bring a curriculum to the schools. Again, my name is Tanisha Jean Martin, I am the climate community director at San Diego Urban Sustainability Coalition, and I'm very open to speak to anyone who would like to speak with me. And again, it's T-A-N-C-I-S-H-A@SDUSD.org. Thanks so much for your time and please don't forget our children.
Thank you, Tanisha. And I think I covered all of our speakers. Thank you to everyone providing comments to the board and superintendent this evening. We appreciate your input and please know your perspectives help us to better serve our students, parents, and the community. This concludes the agendized business of the board. The next regular board meeting will be on April 25th, 2023. Meeting is now adjourned.